Okay, we'll try this again. I have good news and I have bad news. The good news is a lot of what we've done is the same, the, um, what the goals are and what we've been working on. So this will just have a few changes in the beginning and then we'll get into the numbers. So, uh, it was a little surprised when I saw the words "level funded" because that was not what we worked with, it was a level service, so, let's go from there. Again, we looked at our vision and mission. This year, we had 95% going on to college. Some initiatives that we didn't talk about were the readers and writers workshops, response to intervention. We're working on open response questions because in the MCAS, we saw that our students were not excelling in writing our short answer responses to questions they were asked. We're continuing with our STEM initiatives. We're looking at AIMS Web Assessment, continue with technology, and, uh, data analysis. During a curriculum review cycle, we take a look at what's in the curriculum, uh, we, we assess how we're doing, and we see where we need to make improvements. We make changes to the curriculum, and that impacts the instruction. We then take a look again at what students are learning, and we put in interventions and challenges for students that need it, and then we go back to assessment again. So it's a cycle of continually, continually improving. We like to look at each area, uh, about every five years. Right now, under curriculum review, we have, um, social studies, music, PE, literacy. Am I missing anything? Okay, so, we have several areas at one time that we study. While these studies are underway, it's tied to the budget because as soon as the teachers begin to look at new materials and what they need to improve student learning, then it's tied to what are the materials that you need to do that. This is our long-term plan for the curriculum review cycle, so that it's always on our mind that we're looking at all subject areas, we're giving them time to look at curriculum, make improvements, write curriculum, and get materials that are needed. This is a question that people have been asking, what is the Common Core? The Common Core is national curriculum that is meant to really stretch what students are doing. It's been adopted by about 43 states right now. Massachusetts is one of them. They, the Common Core is looking at a lot at what students are expected to learn by breaking that down into specifics. It's supposed to allow teachers and parents, uh, provide needed instruction and support, and that's when you hear RTI, Response to Intervention. That's a support mechanism that's built in to make sure that students get repetition of the information they're learning so they can master it. It should be robust in relevant to college and career readiness, and that's when you're talking about the PARC exam, it's the Partnership for the Assessment of College and Career Readiness. It should include ELA and math standards, as well as content areas, um, literacy standards. Oh, it's 45 states, District Columbia and four territories that have adopted it thus far. I'm sure you're hearing on the national level, there are states such as Indiana, the other day voted not to follow the Common Core. The legislator, uh, turned and reneged on its, um, commitment to it. There are people that feel like Massachusetts is moving too quickly, doing too much too soon, and it's really causing great stress among teachers throughout the Commonwealth. So that we're looking at that. I think Long Meadow has always had rigorous standards, so with, with changes in literacy, that's very different, but many of our other subject areas are already pretty much aligned to the, um, Common Core. What's different about the Common Core? Complexity. It requires regular practice in order to master complex tax, text in academic language. It requires evidence. It emphasizes reading and writing grounded in evidence from both informational and literary text. And you'll see a huge focus on nonfiction. That's a major change in, in Long Meadow, as well as education in the state. It has not been a primary area. We have focused more on literature than nonfiction. And when you really think about what students need to know, both in the area of government, social studies, science, technology, a lot of nonfiction material is important to be able to decipher. Knowledge, the standards require building knowledge through content-rich nonfiction. In terms of the tech advan- advancements, we have fast, high-capacity, cost-effective network, again, saving $90,000 a year. We've expanded the network. We have a new firewall and content filtering system. We've upgraded, upgraded the communication systems. We have multimedia presentation equipment, new computing devices, Google accounts for students, one-to-one computing pilot for, um, Long Meadow High School. That will start very soon. We were unable to do it because we didn't have the broadband to support all the high school students having their own equipment. We're going with a bring-your-own-device, and we're going to also build in, um, a, a number of computers for students that can't afford them, so they're going to be able to sign them out like you sign out a library book. We have a new acceptable use policy and social media policies, and we have new tech, new tools, such as Edwin Inform AIMS Web data tools, that are really going to help us to delve into what students are learning and examine the progress they're making. In terms of cultivating community connections, we had the Long Meadow High School dedication ceremony. We, we invited the senior citizens for a concert and luncheon to say thank you. We did building tours. We had a dinner for the neighbors, and we're beginning adult education classes called Lifelong So what drives the budget process? The strategic plans, and we talked about these already, these are the goals that come directly from the strategic plan. Student achievement, that's what it's all about. What are students learning? In order for students to learn, they have to feel safe in their environment, they have to have the support that they need to really progress and master material. So we're looking at the literacy and math skills, Common Core standards, staff development, curriculum and materials, technology and broadband, and data to monitor student growth. Here is Long Meadow High School SAT outcomes. It shows the highest combined, uh, average reading, writing, and math scores in seven years. They're significantly outperforming state and national averages in all the tests that they take. Critical SAT assessment data, 40% of students scored in the 600 to 800 range on critical reading, 39% scored in the 600 to 800 range in writing, 45% scored in the 600 to 800 range in math, and a total of 478 AP exams were taken in 200, 2013, signaling seven-year high. 87.5% had scores of three-plus compared with only 72.6% statewide. When you're looking at some of this, particularly the AP exams, when we're ranked nationally, this is one of the things they look, look at and why we have such a rich high school. We have a significant number of AP courses that students can take in a variety of areas, so that's what they look at, the number of AP courses, advanced placements, so that they know you're challenging students, and then they look at these scores on the National Advanced Placement Test to see how students are scoring. And that's, those are two key factors that put Long Meadow, uh, at the top of schools ranked nationally. This is a growth model that has come from the state, and the easiest way to read this is to look at the upper right-hand quadrant. The upper right-hand quadrant is where you want to see your scores. If you're looking at, um, the X, that's the, that's the state average, and you can see that we have one area which is grade four that is below the state average. So with the grade four teachers, we've been working closely with them, the principals are working with them, we've been looking at the open responses, as well as doing item analysis on what's happening. If you take a look in the middle top, do you see the green, it's, uh, grade 10? The problem is, they're one of the highest scoring in the state, but the problem is they're not growing in terms of achievement because they're as high as they can get. So while this is helpful if you continually growing, once you get to the point where you've been high achieving in other grades, it, it can keep you at a place where we're up near the top, but we don't have any, any place else to go. This is grade-level achievement in special education, and as you can see, the special education scores are below the state average. We have looked at the model, we've looked at the item analysis, and we've looked at the data, and we decided that we needed to change what we were doing because clearly it's not effective. And that's going to be tied into the budget. Each of the elementary schools had, um, two or three special educators for six grades. The special education teachers were not often able to get to all the kids in a given day because they were spread out too thin among the grades. So we've actually put another teacher at each school, and we've, um, restructured how we're grouping kids so that the special education teacher can service students within the classroom as well as without of the classroom. But that's a major budget change for us. This, I'm quickly going to show you how the students did compared to the state. The state's the gray, and the, um, yellow or the colored line is how we are. You'll notice a couple of things. They changed the test year to year, so when you see that we're following the pattern of the state, that usually indicates that the test got harder or easier. If you see significant differences, for example, on the tail end, we start to go up, then we did better than most of the state because we're not following the, um, the, the pattern that's been set just because of the test difficulty. Grade four had a dip, a lot more severe than the state. Again, we're looking at them to see what's going on in grade four. Grade five followed the state pattern almost perfectly, but had a higher, um, a higher rate of, um, increased achievement, and it's still around 80%, which is fine. If you take a look, this is grade six ELA, they're up around 85%. So while they're almost following the state dipping a little bit, they're still way above the average in terms of, um, the number of kids that are placing proficient or advanced on the test. Grade seven, again, an increase, and if you look at grade seven, we're looking at 90% of kids proficient and advanced. So as we go up the grades, we continue to see rises in achievement. Grade eight followed the state, but again, grade eight is up above 90%. They were hovering at one point around 99, 98%, which is impossible to sustain. But when you get down and you're still in around 93%, that's a wonderful score, wonderful place to be. Grade 10, you can see that grade 10's been up around the 99 percentile now for a couple of years, so that it's really hard to get much higher there. And again, that's why we're not seeing in the growth model, um, an increase into that right quadrant because they're already up around 99% proficient and advanced. And again, that's one of the reasons Long Meadow High is one of the best in the state. This is the new tool that we've put in to actually do some screening on how students are doing. This test was given at grade five, and it shows that 58% of our students are reading proficiently, uh, in a basic reading screening. And this also includes things like nonfiction and informational text, which is a shift, again, from what we've been doing. We see that 32% would need, would need some intervention to, um, hone up on their skills. That would probably be like a six-week intervention with a specialist, and when we talk about specialists, we put in the middle school for that reason. Your red shows you the number of students who need tier-three intervention, and that would be special education. Here's grade six. 60% proficient, 26% needing interventions, and I can't see that number, so, but it's within the... So what are we going to do about academic support, and how are we going to improve these scores, particularly grade four and special education? We're looking at, um, reducing four resource room assistants. Let me frame this for you. We, we talked a little bit earlier about us trying to come in with a budget that, uh, that tried to not go up to the, up to the complete amount that you had suggested, that Stephen Crane had suggested that we use, that we come in less. We understood that there was a $4,000 gap between, uh, what people were expecting to spend and what the reality of the town could afford. So we, we got together as a team and said, "We've been asked to come in with less, we came in 190,000 less because we wanted to help the town out in that way." So we went through these reductions. They were not our first choice to do these, but in an effort to help the town, we thought, "Okay, if we restructure putting in teachers and take some of these out, we can still help the kids and do that in a way that, um, supports the town's budget." So we reduced four resource room assistants, one educational assistant, one academic tutor, two grade-six teachers because the enrollment's dropping, and then we've reduced tuitions because we're keeping more special needs students in-house. Here's what we added. We added certified special education teachers in, in place of assistants to make sure that those students at the elementary schools are getting what they need. We want to make sure that the teachers can get to classes and fulfill the promises made on the IE, IEP plans, uh, so that they can have time for pull-out as well. We added two middle school literacy interventionists. When you, again, you looked at that triangle and you saw that in the middle we had students, for example, 26% that need help with reading, these are the interventionists that will actually help those kids so they don't end up in special education. We put in a reading tutor at center because they had one less reading support person than the other schools. We put in a literacy coach that each of the elementary schools will have one person that's working with their staff around assessing kids and getting them the help they need and working with teachers. We put in full-day kindergarten support in terms of teaching assistance as well as teachers. We increased instrumental music by .1 because she has classes of 40 and 50, and we, um, we built in more special education programs, so we're keeping these kids in-house, thus saving the district, um, substantial amount of money. Again, the, the literacy coach is to take care of that 32%. The three special education teachers will address the ready area, making sure that our students who are in special education are getting what they need. Here with all tiers of the budget, uh, just quickly, tier one is regular classroom education. Tier two is students who need it repeated, they need a little bit of help, they go outside the classroom for a second wave of instruction, and our goal is to get them in there maybe a six, eight-week try, six to eight weeks, and get them back to the classroom so that they're, um, they're caught up and on their own. The third tier is special education, the kids that can't keep up, they need that support outside, they have a learning disability or another reason that we give them that With this, we also, um, we built in the programs, and they're going to the high school, we need a program up at the high school. Full-day kindergarten, we did reduce the fee from $41.50 to $3,000. In order to do that, we added $124,507 so that we could put in a, put in a teacher and an aide in case class size goes up. This was really difficult to tell. We have projected by the census enrollment of 135 students. That happened last year, we had a projection of 131 students and ended up with 175. So we didn't want to fall short, and we wanted to reduce the burden on the parents, so that's budgeted the, um, that amount. This is the middle school literacy interventionist I just talked about, to support that 26% of those kids. And this is supporting tier two with budget addition, special education district program. This is a, a learning lab center program for seven students who are at center school and moving to the middle school. They're in a substantially separate program, and if, uh, those students were going outside, it would cost us $350,000 or more. So that's, program's moving up, and that's what we need to fund it. Now, this is the budget, less-than-projected allocation from the town manager. This is correct this time. FY15 budget of $34,691,645.42, an increase of $447,208.83. Here's the summary of what that looks like. You can compare the general fund. Where the general fund is up, $831,721.79. Our grants are down approximately $27,500. Our special revenues are down 300 and fif, approximately $357,000. So you can see that, that most of the money is coming from the general fund. This is the list of all reductions that are in the budget, and I'll get this to you in writing so that you have that. I, um, I'll email, and I'll get a printed few right after this. And the, there are reductions from throughout, um, throughout various areas in our budget. Everything from, uh, staff attrition that we knew about down to food services, uh, tuitions, special education, and more. So that's a reduction of 1.4 million. The additions came to a, uh, 1.8, approximately $1.9 million. It is everything, and if you take a look first at just the cost of living increases, that is where the majority of our money went. If you look at the first three lines, cost of living increases alone was $465,381. Step increases, which the teachers, uh, get annually, came to another $265,453. And then salary advancement credits for those that continue their education and move up on the step that way was another $35,000, maybe $36,000 approximately. We've added $15,000 because we're going into negotiations next year, so we have to have, um, money put aside for our labor, uh, negotiations. We've, we have something coming up that we anticipate needing approximately $50,000 for legal settlements. We're adding a network administrator due to the volume of what's happening both on the town and in the schools. We have been using a consultant in the past. We believe it's time now with the growth that we've experienced that we put in a network administrator. All districts that I know of have both a network administrator and someone who does Kevin's work. We have been fortunate that Kevin is talented enough to do that, but at this point, we're too large to do it. So we're taking some money from the addition and some from our consulting line to, to support that position. An academic tutor so that center has the same amount of support as the other schools. Special education teachers, we told you about, 195,000. The middle school literacy interventionists, 135,000. Special education district programs, 80,000 for the middle school and 80,000 for the elementary school. Literacy coach at the elementary school, 75,000. Full-day kindergarten program, $124,507. School software and hardware maintenance, $59,314. Town software and hardware maintenance, $40,976. Bus monitors, 15,000. Instrumental music, $6,507. Speech assistant, point-two increase, $5,763. And electricity at the high school, anticipated increases in electricity bills, $134,503. We believe that the results of restructuring will bring higher student achievement for all students. It will enhance the special education support for elementary students so that our teachers can service all students appropriately. It will personalize the literacy support for all children so that even those that need challenge will be reading higher-level books, and those that need support at a lower level will be available. There'll be robust data management to evaluate student growth. Some of the tools that are coming out now are absolutely amazing, what we can do with the data and what we can see about each and every child. Funding to support potential kindergarten participation, we increased that to try and reduce that fee, and we have financial savings through internal special education programs. The supplemental service increases, investments of $721,61, reductions of $460,941, and the total supplemental change of $260,120, and it's already included in the budget. Here's the general fund budget summary. The allocation that we originally talked about was $1,021,863, and the school department request is $831,722, and the request below allocation is $190,141 less than we had originally allocated to us. We hope and we believe we've, we've demonstrated fiscal responsibility, we made cuts well beyond what we wanted to do. We did reshape this, it is not, um, it is not a, um, a, a level-service budget because we needed to restructure to meet the needs of the students in the elementary schools, and we needed that literacy support at the middle school. So by moving some assistants and, uh, adding these teachers, we believe that we're going to see much higher achievement for all of our students. We would like to take this opportunity to thank everyone that supports us. We fully understand that Long Meadow is a community with a high tax rate. We truly appreciate the support given to us by the senior citizens, the parents, residents, um, the, the select board, finance committee, uh, school committee, and more. We couldn't do it without you. This is a phenomenal school system with a lot of great things happening, and it's really due to the support of the residents that that's possible. And those are just extra slides. And I'll take questions at this time.
Thank you. Mark?
Lee, thank you for, for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. What, what's the projected population of the schools for next year versus this year?
It is about 2,700, and I can get you that exact number, Mark. I don't have it off the top of my head. But in addition to that, we take on school choice children and MECO children, so, I don't know if...
I guess the question should have been, "What's the enrollment?" rather than, I mean, just what, what, what you project your total.
I'll get, I'll get you that number.
The other thing is, and, and if you could also, do you have numbers of what percent or what dollar figure of this $34.7 million proposed budget goes to special education, and how many children are classified as special education students?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I guess the other question I have, just as a process question, when you showed the slides of grade five, for example, scores, and you showed it over a period of five years, is that the grade five in each of those five years, or is it the current grade five back when they were first grade, second grade, third grade? So you're tracking a class of children, or you're tracking diff, is it five different classes of children?
Five different classes.
So, so is it, is it fair to say that although there are, we, students score, excuse me, score below state at grade four, by the time they get to grade 10, they're in that 99th percentile?
That is fair to say.
So, okay, so there, there's a, some, I don't know if the right word is "make up" or "progress" or whatever it is, but, but it's not that we're tracking a group of students, but rather, we're tracking, uh, that, that grade?
We do both, Mark, and if you come into my office after the meeting, I'll show you. We have the cohort, and we lay that out too so that the team can look at that to make sure that there's not a cohort struggling. We've looked at the test to see how the curriculum's aligned with the test, but it's important to look at both of them.
But when you've got five years of grade 10 at a, what I'd call a very, very high-performance level, that's five different classes?
That's right.
That have come through, okay. That's what it's like.
Mark, part of it is just the way the MCAS grades student growth. So instead of looking what would sensibly be five years of progression of an individual student, they're looking at how this year's grade five performed against last year's grade five, and that's where those numbers, or those indicators and performance levels.
Right. I guess my concern was, we don't have a, a two- or three-year group of kids in the town of Long Meadow who are performing at below expectations. It's actually, as, as they get to grade 10, they're generally all doing well. That's...
The one thing that we do have to watch for, we're moving, in terms of, um, being the right thing for kids, it's building in-house programs for special education. But we also have to watch that because we now have a group moving to the high school, and they take a portfolio test, which automatically comes out as an F, so that those students, we have to make sure that, that we see, we will see a little drop in the scores, we're expecting that, but we know why. Great, thank you.
Got to turn it off in a minute.
It's in our budget booklet. And we'll put this up for you now, but the, um, the budget booklet has all those charts that will show you, um, a lot of that, the data, so...
Any other questions?
Again, this is everything that's coming from the budget book. You can see a lot of the details are in there.
Read it all.
It's the budget book that we put out, FY15. So it, it has, um, very detailed, I, um, information about the budget.
So is this sort of a, uh, a large, more detailed version of the PowerPoint you've presented?
Yes, much more detailed.
Is that, is that available to us?
Sure.
It takes a while.
It's on the website.
Takes a while to download.
And this is your version of GFOA?
It's ASBO.
ASBO.
Yes.
Thanks to the finance committee, we have $100,000.
Thank you.
Very transparent, though.
It is very transparent.
Okay, you ready for more questions now?
Yeah, so it looks like next year we'll have almost 2,800 students, and then going out through FY7... But in the middle school, we have one special ed teacher per grade, so they have access to those children and they were able to help the regular ed teacher. So, I think if we do the same thing at the, at the elementary school, we can expect to see much higher performance of all of our kids. And we'd like to see them performing beyond the MCAS. That's just one tool. We have students that are going to be presidents of companies, they're going to be engineers, doctors, lawyers. We should be giving them the best we can and really pushing challenge.
I can't disagree with that, but just statistically speaking though, everything has been fine when they hit the tenth grade anyway.
Everything's great in the tenth grade.
Well above the state average. That's the reason I was wondering if, you know, the cost benefit ratio went there.
Yeah.
And why were, there's so much emphasis here and if there was something to support that it was a longstanding problem just in the fourth grade.
Well, the documentation that we have, the, the MCAS is the one that shows us continually there is. And our internal assessments are showing that too with the number of kids that need interventions.
Does that even clear up by the fifth grade and sixth grade?
It is improvement in fifth grade.
But it is already null and gone at that time?
We really see the improvement starting, it goes up in fifth and up in sixth and up in seventh and up in eighth, and then the high school just excels.
Yeah, okay.
Alex?
Marie, I was looking at the test scores that you were talking about and the percentage of students going to college and it seems like we're comparing ourselves to the national average and state average. Have we ever undertaken to compare ourselves to similar communities?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, one of the things, you know, that districts who have students with difficult socioeconomic backgrounds say, well, you know, that's a factor in student achievement and, you know, fortunately, you know, probably the average profile in town of Long Meadow, our socioeconomic status is, is above average. I mean, have we ever attempted to say, how are we doing vis-à-vis Wellesley, you know, vis-à-vis Brookline?
Absolutely.
And, and have, is that information, is that something you could send us?
Absolutely. The DESE actually takes like communities, Wellesley, Weston.
Okay.
And they show us how we compare. Westwood's another one. So, Marblehead. So, they give us approximately ten like districts in its socioeconomic, its size of the community, all those factors. We do very well. We hold our own. We're, we're in the middle for literacy. They were in the same place we are with some of those elementary scores. And in the math, I, does anyone remember offhand? Are we in the middle or up a little bit of math? I can send you those.
It's in the booklet though.
It's, but I'll also send you...
It's in what?
It's in the budget booklet.
Budget booklet.
Yeah.
And, and that relates to ten school districts?
Yes.
Okay.
And all the budget, all the districts we compared are out east. We do not compare to any local districts. We compare to the high achieving districts on the east coast. They don't compare us to Brookline because it's urban. In Newton, we wouldn't compare to, although if you really took curriculum and high achieving kids, they're in those districts as well.
Right.
But it's just because we're suburban, so. We like to look at that data because we were really worried when we got our scores. We wanted better achievement than we were seeing. And then we looked at our like districts. We said, okay, we're right here in the middle of the pack with them, although we'd like to be at the top, but we're, we're doing well.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, I mean, one of the things that you mentioned, which I think is true, is that a lot of the students in Long Meadow are, you know, going to aspire to go to college and beyond and, you know, become doctors, presidents of company, I can't remember all the things you said, but I think that's, that's right. Have we attempted to sort of track where kids go to school and how we do?
Yes.
Vis-à-vis other like communities and vis-à-vis like private schools? Have we ever attempted to do that?
We haven't. I've talked to guidance about that because we actually, I had a parent come to me last year that was concerned that she felt that the students in last year's class did not get into as many elite colleges as, as other classes. We looked through, we were disappointed because they were less elite than normal. But one of the problems right now is the colleges, the colleges are deciding, for example, Harvard will take one from Long Meadow. They look for an international pool. They actually put a quota on students and therefore, it's much harder for our students to get in. And when that one's accepted...
Is that a new, is that new?
It's relatively new for a lot of colleges and it's making it very difficult for our, for our students. And in many ways, it's unfair. The, and the international competition has made this very difficult for our students.
Is that analysis that you've done, is that something you could make available to us?
I can certainly get that in writing. I talked to the counselors. We looked at what they had, so I'll see what I can do on that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Richard?
Yeah, I had a quick one. The last stat that I looked at, and it may not be current now, East Long Meadow was sitting at ninety-five point seven percent graduation ratio and we were sitting at ninety-four point five. Do you have any idea why that would be?
It could be the number of kids that were in district for special education. I don't know off the top of my head, but that would lower your percentage.
Right.
And we do keep more kids in-house.
Yeah.
So, and it could just be an off year where students decide to go to the military. It's, it's a shift. It's a small one, but it is a shift.
Yeah, I was wondering if that may be, if a school choice and all would bring that down.
Yep.
Okay.
Paul?
One of the last slides you had was that the budget requested was a hundred and ninety thousand dollars less than allocated. If it was, is that based on being, because our, my understanding of the instructions was level service. So, you calculated level service to be a hundred and ninety thousand less than what's requested, correct? I just don't want to assume that.
No, we had a meeting, we had sub-team meetings, subgroup from your group and a subgroup from our group and Steven, and we had talked about a dollar figure that we should be targeting. And that was the number that was used.
All right.
That was the projected allocation for the level service?
Yeah.
That Paul started providing.
Right, okay, that's what I, yeah, okay. So, it was projected based on level service, okay.
That was...
All right. And the other question I have is, you mentioned a full day kindergarten. Obviously, there's been some emails about that. And adopting the Common Core standards that the school committee did a few years ago, two or three years ago, I think it was, isn't it inherent upon, I've read, I've read the emails and I've read, I've done some reading on it as well where we're saying on one hand that the full day kindergarten program is needed.
Mm-hmm.
And but, and I understand the three thousand dollar fee reduction from forty-two hundred, but if it's something that is needed, is there gonna, do you anticipate then the kids that are in the half-day program needing some sort of special ed or assistance by the time they hit first grade? Because from what I've read is there's going to be a little bit of a difference between what is taught, between the full day and half-day. So, does that lead to, instead of having a total full day kindergarten, does that lead to some potential special ed, reading assistance, writing assistance type of things by the time they hit first grade?
I, I think we may have to see how it goes first year. We are going to create a binder for the half-day students that the parents can take if they choose to reinforce with their learning because that will be the difference. They'll all get the Common Core, but the full day will have time to review it and integrate it into activities. We won't know how it will go until we actually see how we get through the curriculum in the first year with the two groups. But we do already have reading interventionists in the first grade and we have math interventionists in the first grade. So, we would use that tier-two supports that we would support any student from full day or half-day that needs that before they would end up in special education. Our goal would be to catch them very early. Even within the kindergarten, we'll be doing reading tests on both our half-day and full-day, so we'll have a great sense of where kids are and we'll make sure that we're getting the support that they need. We'll have intervention at that level as well.
Paul, also, I would just add that it's, it's important to remember that the town and the school department never adopted Common Core, but the state legislature voted on it in two thousand and ten. And so...
It wasn't adopted by the school committee?
We don't have a choice. It's, it's a, it's a mandate from the state.
Okay.
Can I say something? Am I? I, I know right now, we have full day and half-day and I talked with my first grade teacher and we've talked with the principals during our kindergarten meetings and they said that right now, the only difference they see in the full day and the half-day kids is that the half-day kids don't know how to put their boots on and they're, can't get themselves ready and can't deal with lunch as easily as the full-day kids. They said we have a, they said for whatever the reasoning, they, they don't understand why, but, you know, they said that they, right now, they're not seeing a difference.
But we're at a different level. I mean, when my kids were going through, there was a full day, half-day and the full day was always said, you get a longer lunch break and longer, more, you know, longer recess. So, there really wasn't a difference in teaching between the full day and half-day, but my understanding is that next year, there will be a difference in teaching, whether it's reviewing more in-class versus at-home and that type of thing.
We'll have more time, but if you take the full day, you do have the lunch period. You have a recess built in there and there will be rest time. So, you, you do see some of that time that's going to go to development, developmentally what's appropriate for the child. So, but there will be additional time that they can reinforce what's been doing, what they've learned and to do projects, so.
Okay. My last question's about electricity at the high school. And, you know, a couple of years ago, we talked about consolidating an A-line item in town and that wasn't well received by the school committee. It was fought on the floor at a town meeting. And now, there's a significant overage. And my, there's two parts to the question is, why? And do we project that overage to next year then be decreased when we get, or read a better field because we were operating two schools? So, you know, this was actually one of the things that we talked about, holding the schools harmless for increased electricity rates or electricity usage. And it's not an I told you so, but it's one of those things that I wish we had talked about a little bit more because it, whether, regardless of where it was, it's still becoming out of the budget, but it would have less impact on your budget. But my question is that we're seeing it, and at least the reports that we gotten back, we've talked about a little bit. There's, Mark brought something back from the school building committee about potential causes and so forth, but do we anticipate that line item being at the same level next year or decreasing?
We don't know. We have met with, the architects and engineers tell us to expect higher costs. That's the answer they give us. Yet, when we met, I asked the, I asked about twenty-five people to come in so we could discuss this because we were surprised to see our energy bills up. And it came to our attention through that meeting that we hadn't put on the evening program, which is non-occupied, which reduces the amount of time the fans are spinning and what lights go on in the hallways and things like that. So, we've implemented that. We've looked at the pool, which is a huge user of that too. We're looking at some other options around that. There are light harvesters in these lights and when we kept insisting something was wrong, the lights weren't working properly, they found out we have defective light harvesters. So, they were all going to be fixed. So, we are on it. Tom and I have been meeting with them weekly to go through what's going on in every single detail in here. My hope is it's going to go down, but the, they tell us not to be too optimistic because they said this system uses a lot more fans to circulate the air than the old building did and it's just, when they call it a green school, they're not calling it, calling it green in terms of reduced electricity, green in terms of clean air and things like that. But I'm optimistic that by us watching some of the system management, some of the system management tools that we might be able to reduce this further.
And it's only at the high school, right? It's not the other schools that increases? Okay.
Very quickly, because we're sort of at seven o'clock and we can ask more questions later and they can come back with some answers. No, we can send the questions to Marie for her to send back to us.
Could I just follow up because I guess I'm a little confused about the full day kindergarten because I guess I'm hearing a couple of things. You know, I, I think a fairly powerful case has been made for having full day kindergarten, but then I'm also hearing that maybe it doesn't matter. I mean, which seems to be sort of the opposite notion. I mean, so, I mean, if it doesn't matter, then why should we be doing it? Why should we be spending more money? Why should we be displacing kids? I mean, do you think, you know, it really is going to improve education and, I mean, I guess that's kind of the question.
I think it will. Many of our students come in reading already. The Common Core raises that expectation that you'll see far more reading strategies mastered by the time they're done in kindergarten. I think more will be expected under the Common Core. We are upping what we expect students to know and do. I think that we are going to do our best to make sure that the pace is the same with them, but the afternoon program will have more support. I, I do think it's best for the children to go full day, but I think it also can be well-managed by a parent who's active with their child. Long Meadow parents are highly educated. If you're willing to read to your child and you're willing to do a little support, there shouldn't be a difference with the children at the end of the year.
Now, I, I think you had said at one point that there were going to be observable differences between the kids who do half-day versus full-day. I mean, do you still believe that or has that changed?
We, that's changed because some of the forums, it was talking as we were developing things, the teachers hadn't done the curriculum yet and I hadn't spoken to them about what it was going to look like. So, as we went through this and then we met with the teachers to talk about full day and half-day, could this be covered? They felt like they could keep pace with the morning class, the half-day program, but in terms of support, they still think having a binder with things that the parents can do to support their children in half-day would be a good idea.
So, you think there wouldn't be a change in educational outcomes?
There will be a change in educational outcomes for all the children.
No, but what, full day versus half-day? I mean, I guess that sort of gets to my question. If it doesn't matter, if we're not going to change educational outcomes, then why are we doing it?
Mm-hmm.
If, if, if it is going to change educational outcomes, one group versus another, I mean, that would be good to know. I mean, so do you think we're going to have changed educational outcomes or no?
Yes, we are going to change educational outcomes.
No, but I mean, one group versus the other, the observable differences.
I think time's going to tell.
Okay.
Richard, did you?
No, I'll let it go. You're right. Are you?
Yeah, I just have one question. What, you always, you were saying about ninety-four, ninety-five percent graduating go on to college. Is that your gra, your graduation rate or just your graduation?
It's the percent that go to college.
Okay, so what about the idea of what percentage are graduating?
One hundred percent.
One hundred percent, so we don't have dropouts occurring in the past few years.
One year, we had a one percent dropout rate, but normally, we're at one hundred percent.
Four hundred percent, okay. Thank you.
Yes, I will shoot it in. I've always, I've always been under the impression or the general belief that a lot of the special programs were designed for the, on the lower end of the socioeconomic scale. Is, is, is the theory of that in the spirit of that consistent with what we're moving forward with on wanting to charge people for the full day kindergarten when it's really designed to help the lower socioeconomic class?
This is designed to help all children because the Common Core has changed what we're asking kids to do. I, I fully believe it's good for all children. It's in terms of what they're using, a technology in the kindergarten. Now, it's really exciting to visit a kindergarten class, but this is good for all children. I, I don't see this as a socioeconomic thing. I see this as really just advantageous for them all.
I agree. It would be advantageous for everyone, but aren't we in fact, by charging parents a fee, actually going against the core principles of the policy for lower socioeconomic groups?
I have urged all parents to come and see me. I've been in contact, two have contacted me. This should not be a barrier to anyone. People should come and talk to me. And if there is a reason that they need help, we'll find a way to help them.
Okay, so I guess I'll count that as a halfway yes then.
No, I wouldn't count that as a yes.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation. If there are any more questions, we can send our questions on as we go through the next few days of budget review.
Thank you.
Richard, I would just add one more thing. Sorry, sorry, meeting, but, you know, it's important also to remember what the state actually requires. The state doesn't necessarily, the state does not require that children attend kindergarten. They require we offer four hundred and fifty hours of kindergarten education, four hundred and twenty-five hours of kindergarten education. with on wanting to charge people for the full day kindergarten when it's really designed to help the lower socioeconomic class?
This is designed to help all children because the Common Core has changed what we're asking kids to do. I fully believe it's good for all children. It's in terms of what they're using, a technology in the kindergarten. Now, it's really exciting to visit a kindergarten class, but this is good for all children. I don't see this as a socioeconomic thing. I see this as really just advantageous for them all.
I agree, it would be advantageous for everyone. But aren't we, in fact, by charging parents a fee, actually going against the core principles of the policy for lower socioeconomic groups?
I have urged all parents to come and see me. I've been in contact, two have contacted me. This should not be a barrier to anyone. People should come and talk to me. And if there is a reason that they need help, we'll find a way to help them.
Okay, so I guess I'll count that as a halfway yes, then.
No, I wouldn't count that as a yes.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation. If there are any more questions, we can send our questions on as we go through the next few days of budget review.
Thank you.
Richard, I would just add one more thing, sorry. Sorry, I'm meeting, but, you know, it's important also to remember what the state actually requires. The state doesn't necessarily, the state does not require that children attend kindergarten. They require we offer 450 hours of kindergarten education, 425 hours of kindergarten education. Our total school hours for kids grades 1 through 12, 90 hours. So, you know, the state is, you know, obviously taking a stance on what they believe is necessary, and we do fulfill what is necessary as far as the state is concerned.
Right.
By offering a free 425 hours of kindergarten education.
Right. But I'm going back to the design program. Why have we brought the Common Core in to start?
You got to talk to your legislature.
Okay, well, I mean, I've read enough to know why it's been brought in, and you do too. Okay, thank you.
So we'll be starting the joint meeting now for-
So at this point, now that we have everybody here, we're going to call the joint meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board and Long Meadow School Committee to order. For members of the board, of our boards and applicants tonight, we are going to go through a process. We've already picked the order in which we're going to be asking you questions, and for every applicant after that, we're going to move down one. So the order's going to kind of rotate a little bit. I read your document. The only thing, I'm just, I'm varying a little bit. Mark drafted this document three years ago. So the order in which applicants are going to be interviewed tonight is very simple. It's alphabetical. We're going to begin with Matthew Brackman, followed by Michelle Grodsky, Heather LaPorte, and then Georgia Pat O'Robert. Did I get that right? Okay. The order in which we'll be asking questions tonight begins based on the numbers we drew out of this cup. And the first question will go to John Fitzgerald, followed by Marie Angelides, then myself. Paul Santinello will be asking question number four. Katie Gerard, number five. Alex Grant, number six. Kim King, number seven. Richard Foster, number eight. Janet Robinson, number nine. Mark Gold will be number 10, and Liz Bone will be number 11. And we're going to try to keep it to one question per person, but, you know, follow-up is certain, a follow-up question is certainly allowed during the initial question. Part of, yeah, so hopefully that's acceptable to everyone. In the interest of time, since you have your meeting and we have a meeting to continue. The other thing to keep in mind is that by charter, we need to wait at least one week in order to actually appoint one of you to the board. And at this point, we don't have that meeting scheduled, but I have proposed the 24th during our next school committee meeting to do that, recognizing, of course, that John will not be here on Monday, the 17th, and that you guys have a regularly scheduled meeting with budget business that needs to be taken care of as well. So if that's acceptable to the Select Board during, on the 24th, we'll do that. And I guess we'll try to have the town clerk here as well to swear one of you in right away, so that you can actually join the school committee meeting. How convenient is that? So without any further ado, what I will do is I will call up Mr. Brackman first. Do I have that right? How are you? And if you would just approach the, have a seat, make yourself comfortable, state your name and address for the record, and you can begin with an opening statement. And the same obviously goes for the other three applicants. So, please.
Do we need this microphone?
Yes, it doesn't actually amplify, but it's for the television station.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, my name's Matthew Brackman. I'm a physician here in the community. I've lived in Long Meadow for about four years now. I have three children that are growing up in the Long Meadow system. And when I saw the opportunity to fill a vacancy on the school committee, I thought it was really a nice opportunity to get involved in local politics and to help shape the community as, what has become my adopted home community. And I hope my kids can grow into a community, a community that I have some input as to the direction that it takes. So I did throw my hat in the ring, and I'm gathering signatures avidly, and hopefully I'll be able to contribute.
Thank you. And so, in the order of events, I suppose, John, you have the first question.
Okay. Well, thank you for applying for this position, and thank all of you for coming out tonight. I'm concerned about the role of social studies, the humanities, literature, art, and music in a world where we hear a lot of talk about STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. Could you discuss how you feel about the social studies, the humanities, and their role, proper role in the kind of education we should offer K through 12?
Well, you know, at every level of education, and certainly when we reach a level of professionalism, we are asked to be well-rounded individuals. Because when you focus on one thing, and one thing only, you tend to have a very narrow view of society, how things should be done. And so I think we should never forget that a complete person, a complete professional is someone who has the ability to draw multiple different points of view, multiple different experiences in life to contribute. It doesn't matter if you're a scientist, you can use your history of social studies knowledge. You know, history is important. Those who, those who don't pay attention to history are content to repeat it. Literacy is critical in almost any pursuit, even in medical school. If I couldn't write an admission essay, I probably wouldn't have gotten in. So I needed that foundation in social sciences, social studies, literacy, and then certainly everything that we do nowadays professionally, we have to read and comprehend what we're reading to put, to put maximal use to our time, to put the lessons that we learn from reading, what we're looking at. So, yeah, I think those academic pursuits are invaluable.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Marie?
Hi, thank you for coming. What is your personal goal for your time on the school committee if you are appointed?
Well, I think the, the school committee has done an admirable job. Everything that I've looked at in the past few months as I've prepared for this night, I've been impressed with the accomplishments. So I think the primary function will be to help continue what's been set in motion and hopefully help predict the change that is inevitable. Because even the most well-drafted plan has to be malleable. The future is unknown, and we have to be able to adapt. And hopefully, I'll be able to help steer the ship in the right direction, even though it's already going the right direction, you never know which way it's going to be pushed.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So you said that you had been reviewing some of the work that we've done, and, you know, many of us have spent the last couple of years on this committee working hard on that. So, you know, of the things that you've seen, what really sticks out as, you know, something that you like that we've done, and what's something that you are not as, I guess, happy about, or, you know, not as supportive of?
Well, I particularly like the strategic plan because, you know, I take a lot of pride in Long Meadow, even though I've not been here more than a few years. And when my kids grow up and say they're from Long Meadow, I want that to mean something educationally. And so to have a benchmark that is above the mean of the state, I think is an admirable goal. And I think the strategic plan allows for Long Meadow to reach not just the mean in achievements, but far beyond the mean. So I think that's, that's very well crafted. You know, I get a lot of input from my friends who, once I told them I was interviewing for the school committee vacancy, they invariably turn to kindergarten. I'm sure you've all heard enough of that by now, but when I was growing up, kindergarten was, full day kindergarten was offered by my community. I recognize the budgetary restraints, but I think a goal would be to try to offer that at no cost. If that's achievable, great. If not, well, at least we'll give it a heck of a try.
Thank you very much. Paul?
All right, well, you just answered my question about full day kindergarten, so good job on that one. So I'm going to, you just answered what I was going to ask you about, your thoughts about the full day kindergarten program. Thank you.
Okay. Katie?
So knowing, you know, what we've done well and what we could improve on, what do you think the most pressing issue facing the school committee is presently?
Well, in a town like Long Meadow, you have very well-educated people, very demanding people, and you can't make all of those people happy all the time. So I think one of the priority goals would be to try to include the community in the decision-making process, not necessarily that they have a vote, but keep them well-educated why these decisions are made. And not that it will eliminate complaints, but it will perhaps get more contribution from the town, whether it's generating ideas, serving as volunteers. There's no better labor than free labor, so if they're willing to volunteer for the benefit of their own children's education, I think that'd be well-received. So I think it's just keeping the public aware of what's going on, why the decisions are made, and that would go a long way towards keeping everybody happy.
Thank you.
Okay, Alex?
I'd just like to first say, thank you for taking an interest, and it sounds like you're running for office. Having done it for the first time last year, I know it's a lot of work, so I'm glad that you've got that level of commitment. One of the issues that faced this school committee in the fall was whether to vote for resolution against a Springfield Casino. And I guess I'd like to know what your views are on that, or if you feel that, you know, it's not part of the school committee's, the school committee shouldn't take a position on it, you know, I think that's a fine position as well. Well, actually, I would disagree with it, but I would respect, I would respect it, but I just want to know what your view is.
Well, I don't know if you remember me from the, sitting in the back of the room at one of the school committees.
Okay, maybe, maybe I missed it, so I'm sorry.
Well, I was very interested. I came to the Board of Selectmen's presentation on some of the negotiations that were going on with the casino.
Okay, actually, now I'm making the connection. Okay, sorry.
And the reason I came is because, you know, as an adult, I, it really doesn't matter to me whether the casino comes. I think I can adapt. But what I do worry about is my children, because I'm not for them living in a community that has such a bad example. I'm sorry if the casino lab gets here, but I personally don't like the fact that a casino's going to be right next door and all the things that casinos are associated with. I particularly am worried about gambling addiction, and you have a very easily influenced population. High school students can be very intelligent, but they also are very easily influenced, for lack of a better word. It's not to say that they're not intelligent, it's not to say that they're not driven, but when you present to them the idea of getting rich quick, you get gambling addiction. And so, yeah, not for that, although if it is inevitable that it comes, I think we've got to make the best of a bad situation. And I think we have to incorporate some educational activities into the curriculum in whatever way we can to teach them how to resist some of the temptation that goes on with having this casino.
Ken?
So, being on school committee, you would get approached by probably everyone you know at one point about some issue that they have going on within their school, with their particular child and their teacher. How would you handle those types of requests if approached? And how do you think you'd be able to remain objective during, if it's something kind of a heated conversation?
Well, I like the fallback position of being able to say, I don't make any independent decisions as a member of the school committee, if I'm elected to the school committee. That there are seven of us, and none of us can really discuss those issues on an individual basis because we don't make decisions on an individual basis. So I'd always be able to refer them to the school committee meeting. I assume it's an open meeting, which they're welcome to attend and voice their opinion, and I would direct them that way.
Good. Great, thank you. Mr. Foster?
Yeah, thank you. We talked about status quo, and then I, I look out, I've had the opportunity to live in many, many different states in our, in our country, and been under many different educational systems. And some of the states push forward with some unbelievably advanced programs for high school students to have two years of college while they're still in high school and have an associate degree when they graduate. There is the early childhood high school, there's the PTCS, there's the National Academy Foundation, there's a lot of different ones out that give a lot of choices, and most of them seem to increase the graduation rates. In Massachusetts, we have very few opportunities like that, and in Long Meadow, we do not have any established programs. I'm wondering what your feelings are about that type of initiatives on moving forward, if we should kind of bring ourselves up, at least offer some of the things that are offered in many other states in our union.
Yeah, you know what? I was in Florida for a couple of years, and there were a couple of schools in Florida that were so highly regarded that parents would send their kids there from all over the country. They didn't always come with them, though. And so, the point there is sometimes we push our children maybe a little beyond what they might be ready for. But I think you have to offer them that. I mean, if it's within the budgetary constraints to offer programs like that for students who show aptitude, I think that's certainly wonderful. But I think the focus should be on getting your students as a group, as a whole, to achieve what are considered the core requirements, and then, you know, gear the program to those students who have additional abilities beyond that, if they have that ability, make it available to them if possible. But I think the focus should be on educating everyone to an excellent level, and then going beyond if there is aptitude.
Great, thank you. Janet?
So, based upon your research, I'm sure you reviewed our mission statement, which we start every meeting with. So the ability for us to work together as a team, working toward common vision and common goals, is critical. So my question is, can you or should you support a board decision that you're personally not in favor of? And why or why not? And could you give an example of that from your professional or personal life of how you handled that situation?
Right, so I know that also, one of the core values of the school committee is that everyone should be heard and that everyone's opinion should be valued. And that's great. So an individual has the ability to modify the direction, the future of the school system by voicing their opinion on the school committee as an individual. But when that message gets translated to the community, I think it has to be a uniform front. If members of the community see dissension among the ranks of their elected officials, I think chaos ensues. So I think regardless of what the personal opinion is of the individual, once the vote has been cast, they have to, they have to voice the, voice of the group. Yeah, this, this comes up in almost every field. I mean, I'm part of a surgical practice right now where a doctor's not happy with the way my partner treated their patient. Well, I have, I have the option right there of saying, yeah, my partner's not very good at that, or, or I wouldn't have done it the same way, but that really undermines his work, and he's dedicated his life to achieving a certain level. He may have a different opinion. If I don't like the way he handled something, I'll say to him in the office, behind the scenes, I'll say, you know, did you ever consider doing it this way? But to, but to cast doubt upon his skill, his education, his dedication to the people that come to him for advice, I think is not the appropriate way to deal with it.
Thank you.
Mike?
One of the issues that we often hear about is the, the high costs and rising costs of special education in Long Meadow. I don't have the current numbers, but it was something like 15 or 20% of the school budget is special education for handling far less than that as a percentage of the students. What are your thoughts about special education, funding special education, and potentially alternative approaches to funding special education?
Well, obviously, it's a critical part of educating your community is addressing adequate budgetary dollars towards special education. But maybe there's better ways to spend those dollars. So I know that Long Meadow sends a lot of students out to other communities and other educational systems, perhaps because we don't have the infrastructure right now to deal with that. And I know there's already a push to bring some of those students back, so that if we offer those services here, maybe we can actually reduce our costs as a whole and better spend the dollars that we do have. Also, if more time or maybe a better ratio of teacher to student is directed at those borderline students who might be special education, but if they achieve a little bit better, would not necessarily be special education, I think you can save money in that way. And so it's, and I know the town has already taken steps in that regard as well. So I think basically, offering services that will prevent you having to send people out to other communities will save tax dollars, save budgetary dollars, and improving the education of those students who are borderline will probably also help.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Liz?
Thank you. My question is, I noticed that you're a surgeon, as you said before, and that seems like a very busy job. And on the school committee, as you know, we have bi-monthly meetings, and sometimes we have special meetings like tonight, or with the- and sometimes we have special meetings like tonight, or with the select board, and if you're on a subcommittee, you also have meetings in the evening or in the daytime. Would you be willing to make, do you have this kind of time in your day to make these commitments?
Yeah, well, that's, I don't want to admit that I have more time than people think I do, because then, then people ask more of me. But, you know, the field of surgery has changed in recent years. You take Bay State, for example, they have this acute care surgical service now. I haven't been woken up to take someone's appendix out in about six months, whereas I used to do that almost every other night. So, that leaves me with more time than perhaps I should have, because now I have to look for other things to fill my time. I would love to participate in the school committee, and I wouldn't look at it as, as a difficult task, I would say this, it's a way I can break away from my normal routine and participate in something that might be a little different than what I'm used to.
Thank you.
Thanks. So, with that, and thank you for your time.
There's no chance for second questions?
Well, we could open it up if anyone has, but we didn't put in the time for everyone to ask a second question. Is there a second follow-up that someone wants to make?
All right. Go ahead, John.
I have one, too.
Go ahead, John.
You go first, go ahead.
One of the issues in our town has been the capital needs of the schools, specifically our middle schools. Have you had a chance to form any opinions of our middle schools and what might, you might want to see done to address some of the needs that might, might be apparent?
I would say that I have not. I wish I had an answer for that question. But I've looked in more at what some of the issues are facing the high school, and maybe that's because I have a daughter who's just about going into high school, and I've looked at some of the issues facing elementary school level, because my other two children are in the elementary level. I miss the middle school level, so I can't really offer an opinion on that.
Yeah, if I could, just a quick question.
Are you also taking out papers to appear on the ballot for the June election?
Yes, I am.
For the interim appointment?
I am, yes.
Okay, well, good, thank you.
Fantastic. Any other follow-up questions? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Michelle Grodsky.
I didn't submit a resume or anything, should I hand them out or state what you're asking? Do I have them? Should I?
You can hand them out.
Sure, hand them out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
You're up.
Okay. This is quite a hot seat, thank you.
Rotate now. So I'll be last, okay, fine.
So just to remind everybody now, you're one position below where you were, or above where you were before. So John's going last, and Marie is first, and I'm second, and you're third.
Thank you.
Just to remind you.
Just to ask her a question.
Did you want to make a personal statement?
Yeah, yeah.
Before we begin?
Sure, my name's Michelle Grodsky. I am the mother of three kids in Long Meadow, and I grew up here, I graduated Long Meadow High School, looked much different when I graduated. And I have been a stay-at-home mom since I moved, since I started with them. I have wanted to be involved in their education from the very beginning, so have basically used my time volunteering at the schools that they've been at. And now that they're a little bit older, one is in kindergarten, one is in second grade, and one is in fourth grade. I felt like the best way to be involved in their education would be to be on the school committee. So, when I saw the vacancy, that's when I thought it was a good time to step in and apply. So here I am. And it's been a very long time since I did anything like this, and so, following, you did a great job, I will do my best. I never interviewed in this form. So, thank you.
You first.
And so, if you are appointed, will you be running in?
Yes, yes, I pulled my papers and will be getting my signatures.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
I want to echo Marie, thank you for applying. What are some of the things that you're aware of that the school committee's worked on in the last few years? You know, what sort of projects and different initiatives have we worked on?
Well, the one that, you know, gained the most attention was the high school, and I, you know, can't thank you enough for all of the time that I know each of you put into that, or everyone's put into that. And I feel so fortunate that it, that it came to fruition, it looks beautiful. I haven't had a full tour, I've been in some wings, and I'm just, I'm so excited for the kids to have this, and for the town to have this as a school. I have seen the recent buzz about the kindergarten, and otherwise, I was affected by the change in entry date, or the cutoff date, so I was very familiar with that. But otherwise, I really haven't paid that much attention to the political end of things. I'll be honest.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Michelle, my question's going to be the same for you as it was, the full-day kindergarten program, what are your thoughts about? Because obviously, that's been in the paper a lot.
Yep.
What are your thoughts about that?
Yep. So, I, I don't know everything that went into the decision, and I would like to be more informed on the big picture. So I don't have a real opinion on it myself, because I just don't know everything that you all considered, but I know that, that it was a long process that brought you to the decision. I think that there was, you know, I did see that there was a study done, and I think that a lot of attention was paid to making that decision, and I think more than likely you took, you know, all of the factors and made a decision based on what was best for the community as a whole and the students as a whole.
Thank you.
Katie.
So, my question is the same as well, you know, having your kids in the school system and knowing what sort of goes on around, what do you think is the most pressing issue that's based on our school right now?
Well, I think there's so many. I think, you know, the long-term goals, I know that there's, you know, the common core is coming in, and that's a huge factor, and whatever tests will be associated with that, you know, the school has to pay attention to that, so that has to be a priority and would be a big one. And I think just the overall goal of making sure that we're meeting all of the kids' needs in the best way that we can. You know, I think everyone here in this room would give them everything and every financial, you know, expense paid, and, you know, the whole day would be dedicated to doing their best, but you have to pick your battles and choose wisely what the best option is for them.
Alex.
Is it my? Okay. So, so the good news here is that the people down the line get the preview of all the previous questions. I learned this because I put in for interim position one time. So I'll ask the same question, and what are your views on casino, on the casino?
Again, I don't have all of the information. I'd like to, you know, to see it all and do my research before I come to an opinion, and I didn't spend a lot of time doing that. I, you know, I know that there are positives and negatives to it. I think that the positives would bring a lot of tax money to the schools, and we could certainly use that, you know, the dollars that didn't come out of our own pockets. But then, there are some negatives that, you know, many people have voiced, and I would have to, you know, make an informed decision, and I can't say that I have done that, so I can't, you know, I just, I would have to look at the big picture.
Okay.
So my question, how would you handle requests from friends if approached by people within your community, within your school district, other schools while you're out at, say, the soccer field or whatever, with their own personal agendas, I guess?
I think that would be a very big challenge. I grew up here, so I know a lot of people, and I certainly know that everyone has, you know, their story and their particular, you know, situation, and that's the most important thing to them. But, you know, I would do my best to be a good listener and to gather all the information that they're giving me, and then to take what, you know, I could to the committee to, you know, hear what I'm hearing from the community, to bring it, you know, forward. And I would do my best, again, to just be a good listener and say, "I'll be sure to, you know, take that to the committee or to try to help you," you know, and promise nothing and not make any, you know, again, bring it to the committee, no promises.
Richard.
Okay, thank you. I noticed that you're a teacher.
Yes, I was.
And taking some time off for the family.
I did, yes.
Okay. I noticed that you have some letters of reference on North Carolina.
I do.
So you must, you're likely very aware of how progressive their educational system is.
Yes, I only spent one year there when I graduated, that's where I went. It was just a little too far from home, my, my whole family was here and has been here, so I just spent the one school year there. But I had such an amazing experience, I was in a brand-new school with all these dollars from the federal government, so it was just an amazing experience. And they do, I had at that time, which, if you could remind me the dates, it must have been 1996, 1997, we had computers in our classroom, which was unheard of at that time. So, and to do a classroom like I had, it was three grades, excuse me, third, fourth, and fifth grade, all in one room, fifty students, it was very progressive, and, and it was a great idea. They ended up that next year moving it down to two grades, which I think worked really well. But just that, that they're trying new things, it was, it was fantastic. I'm glad to have been and experienced it.
Good. I noticed, last year seemed, the stats I can see, we got a 12.4 to 1 teacher ratio. What do you think about that ratio?
A 12 to 1 ratio?
12.4 to 1 student-teacher ratio.
That's great, fantastic. I, when I was teaching, I had, in third grade, 22 kids or so. What you can do with half of that is, it's amazing.
It's a dream come true, isn't it?
Yes, absolutely, for the kids and the teacher.
Thank you for your answers, and good luck.
Thanks.
Janet.
Okay, so mine is the same on the ability to work together as a team. Can you, or do you feel you should support a board decision that you personally were not in favor of? And could you explain why or why not, and if you've had any experience with that?
Well, I'm almost forty years old, and in those years, I've learned that I'm not always right. When I was younger, I definitely thought I was, and it's taken me, you know, a lot of different experiences to learn that even though I might think it's one way, that if many other people are feeling otherwise, then more than likely, that's the way to go. So, I support teamwork, I support a group decision, and, and know that my views might always, not always be the best ones, so I fully.
Thank you.
Good evening. Does, do you believe that the school committee should, should take a role in what I'll call, I guess, non-traditional education or education for not, that's outside nine to five, whether it's, you know, evening classes, Saturdays, other things? What role should the school committee take, and what would your thoughts be in Long Meadow adopting some of those ideas?
It's a great idea to, I'm guessing that you mean like, you know, tutoring for younger grades?
Even adult education, right.
Or adult education. I think that's, that's great, and especially if it can bring, you know, more opportunities for parents and children to, to learn. I would assume that would, well, I shouldn't assume, but how would that be funded? Would it be, you know, where people pay for that, or?
That's why you get the big bucks on the school committee.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, you don't get the big bucks.
Thanks for rubbing it in.
I would love to hear more about it, and to, I think it has a lot of great potential, it just would, you know, again.
Liz.
Thank you for applying. What subcommittee would you be interested in, if you're on the board? You have Green Team, you have Policy, Finance, Capital Planning, anything that you see you could add your talents to?
I guess it would depend on, you know, what at the time was happening within those committees. I love the Green Committee, I think it's a great way to, you know, teach the kids and to get them involved, and then as well, to help save money for the schools, because if you're, you know, I've seen, as a volunteer, money get wasted so easily, and then I've also seen it where it's just, so that would also be another plus. But again, it would just depend, you know, if there's a push for a middle school, a new middle school, or I would love to be involved in that, so. Thank you.
John.
Okay. Well, thank you for your interest in the school committee, and thank you for coming out tonight. I'm going to give you the same question I asked before. We hear a lot of talk these days about science, technology, engineering, and math, and I think all of us appreciate the importance of them. But how do you feel about history, art, music, the humanity side of, say, a K through 12 education? Could you talk about that?
Yes, I feel that's extremely important, and I would, I would do my best to make sure that we maintain those in the schools, or, you know, my hope would be to maintain them. I know that there's constantly new things that these kids need to learn, so then, you know, you have this many hours in a day, and the worry would be to take some, you know, what do you take away? And I would hope that we could try to integrate everything that's new into things that already exist, because I think that you can't lose those, those pieces of education.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. So, I guess we'll go in order of follow-up questions. Do you have a follow-up question? I don't either. Paul, do you have a follow-up question? Katie? Alex? Kim? Richard?
Yeah, I have one. We do a lot, it seems we do a lot of identification work for the students in need. What is your feelings on the students that excel? What do you think we should be doing in that arena?
I think those are special needs every much as, as students that are failing, because their academic needs are different. So my, my passion is for teaching every kid in the best way possible for them. So I think that accelerated learning and children that are above grade level need to be addressed just as much as children that are below grade level, because...
Identified and then curriculum developed.
Absolutely, absolutely.
To challenge them, appropriately challenge them.
Yes, that was, when, when I was teaching, that was, at each of the schools I was at, that was a main focus, was how do you teach, especially when I was at Charlotte. I had, I had kids that were in third grade but reading at a kindergarten level, and I had kids that were in fifth grade but reading at an eighth grade level. So how do you meet all of those needs? But it's, it can be done, and it's important.
Thank you.
Okay. Janet? Mark?
Just a follow-up question, and you somehow addressed this in the last answer, but, but how, how could the school, school department and the school committee address the disconnect in costs for our special education program?
Again, I don't know much about this in, in the financial sense, in the budget sense, but I know as a teacher, how important it is to have the kids in the classroom as much as you can, and that there are things that you can't do within the classroom for them, and if they have to leave to maximize their learning, then, you know, you kind of find a, a good mix of that. If it would need, if they would need to get sent out of the system, then to me, that would be, you know, a decision that we made as a group based on, you know, the best interest of the kids and of the, the school as a whole. It's a, it's a tough one.
Good, could I follow up on Richard's question?
No, go into a third round. Let me get to the other two people. Sorry.
I hadn't used my second.
You didn't use your second, I know. You skipped it. Liz?
Nothing.
John?
I'll pass over that.
All right, Alex.
No, I was, I was just really interested in your response to Richard's question about, you know, meeting the needs of all students, including students that excel. And, you know, one of the things that I think has changed in education over the years from the time that people my age or, you know, was the difference between tracking and non-tracking. You know, it used to be, fine, you know, okay, kids are doing well, we'll be in one class, everybody else will go somewhere else. And it seems like educational policy is getting away from that, and...
No, I was just really interested in your response to Richard's question about, you know, meeting the needs of all students, including students that excel. And, you know, one of the things that I think has changed in education over the years from the time that people my age or, you know, was the difference between tracking and non-tracking. You know, it used to be fine, you know, okay, kids are doing well, we'll be in one class, everybody else will go somewhere else. And it seems like educational policy is getting away from that, and, you know, having confronted this issue, you know, in your own classrooms, how do you do, like, how do you differentiate instruction if you're not going to track, or maybe you do have to track? I don't know. I'm just interested.
Well, at the elementary school level, it was a lot easier to group them by their abilities. You know, you might have a green group right here and a red group, and, you know, for the most part, at that age, the kids didn't pay too much attention to it. You can also address it by, like, learning centers. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but, you know, you can have an activity where everyone's doing the same thing at the beginning, and then if you're moving through that quickly, you can, you know, get, reach a different point and a different learning, you know, a different level. So, you know, it can be met that way. I know that the new reading initiative will definitely help with that as well. You have the, you know, smaller group format, and so there's just a lot of ways to do it, and I think that the new reading program will definitely be a great addition to the schools. I'm excited about it.
Any other follow-ups for Michelle? Okay. Seeing none. Thank you very much for your time. I know, you're in the hot seat.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. All right, Heather?
I'm in the hot seat now.
Yeah? So obviously, thank you very much for applying. Please begin with a personal statement if you have one.
Thank you for having us here today, and I know you guys have a lot on your budget agendas and, you know, we're taking up more of your time here. So I'll try and be brief and just give a brief introduction of who I am and where I come from. My name's Heather Laporte. I live at 669 Shaker Road here in town. I was not raised in Long Meadow, but right next door in Springfield. I was born and raised in Springfield and actually went through the private schools in Springfield. My parents worked very hard to send me there. They actually had always toyed with the idea of moving here but couldn't afford to, so the next best option was the private schools in Springfield. I was a Cathedral High School graduate in 1996. I then stayed in town to graduate from AIC. I was the first person in my family to receive a four-year college degree, which my family's very proud of. I then went to the University of Maryland Law School and received my law degree. I stayed up there for one year and did a clerkship in the Superior Or.
Thank you.
And then my husband and I actually returned to Massachusetts so he could go to medical school at UMass in Worcester.
Did you get this?
During that time, when I, when we first came back, I did actually substitute teach at Norwalk Technical High School. This was a very rewarding experience, but also a completely challenging experience to be, I was a substitute teacher for about six months, five days a week, in a different classroom all day with different students, and just getting in there, you know, I really learned how hard it is to be a teacher, and especially I had absolutely no training and was just in there doing the lessons and trying to give these, have these kids get something out of that experience. So that was, that was a lot of work, but a great experience, too. Five years ago, my husband and I, after being in Worcester area, decided, you know, we were going to start our family and buy a home, and we chose Long Meadow. It was, you know, actually a very easy choice. I'm from Springfield, he's from Westfield, we wanted to be back here. The school system in Long Meadow is clearly the best. There's an amazing sense of community here in town. The residents are proud to live here. All the residents are very active in the community, whether it be in this forum or just in their own neighborhoods, and getting out and meeting people and keeping the neighborhoods nice and safe, and always willing to give back to make it grow. I have always been interested in getting more involved in politics in the town, but honestly, until now, my schedule hasn't really allowed it. My husband has been in residency training. I don't, the other interview would know what that entails, but pretty much works a minimum of 80 hours a week up until recently has been his schedule. I also work full-time as an attorney at the law offices of Mark Salamon and with the children. He is now finishing up his residency and will have a very, much more normal, which will seem like heaven, schedule. And I've also, I still technically work time but have very much cut back hours, so I will also have more time to get involved. And now my youngest daughter's going into kindergarten, so I have that connection to the school system. I hope I can bring a fresh voice to the community, to the committee if selected. I often hear people saying to children, "Oh, you're a good arguer, you should, you should be a lawyer." And it just makes me laugh, because it's not at all, I don't think of myself as an arguer. I know there's some lawyers on the select board. Maybe, I mean, I don't think that's what most lawyers do. I think what we're taught to do in law school and what we do in our jobs is we're given a problem and we analyze the facts, and we analyze the law surrounding it and the whole situation around it, and we come up with a conclusion. And that's what, that's what we do as lawyers. And sometimes you do have to advocate your position to get to that conclusion, but it's very much not arguing, and I think that's what the school committee, you know, does. You're given a problem, you have to go out and get all the facts, get the information and the laws, and then you have to work to come towards a conclusion. And I would hope that I would have a voice that could help analyze those facts and work towards some new conclusions and, you know, help just move things in a good direction and in a positive direction as it has been going. So pretty much, I'd just like to serve on the school committee to bring my opinion, ideas, and knowledge to the committee and ultimately to the whole community.
Thank you very much. So I'm actually going to start with the first question for you. What types of, you know, what types of school committee initiatives are you most familiar with that we've done exclusive of kindergarten?
I was going to actually start with exclusive of that. Actually, I was doing some research, and what I was really glad to see is, I believe you and Superintendent Doyle had attended the meeting with the SEAL group, and I really actually thought, it was really good to see, and I read the meeting minutes, and just really a positive move. I know we talk a lot about the cost of special education, and I think reaching out and having the parents feel involved from the process in the beginning and working towards goals for all those kids, children, right from the beginning can help smooth transitions and really keep the communication going, which I think helps things run smoothly. And the, I think it was called the, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on the other name, the Life Skills Program? That was running, and I thought that was, you know, a really great program also. Those were the two that really caught my attention.
Sure, thank you. Paul?
Full-day kindergarten.
Sandy, you're going to ask that question, so I can...
So he saved it. I am for the all-day kindergarten. I do understand, and I know we're working in a tight budget, I know these are tough times. I do think that with the Common Core coming into play and this vigorous standards we're going to have for our kindergarten children and then moving up each year, I really feel that this is the foundation to prepare our children. And, you know, the school committee's motto is "Eye on the Child," and I think it starts in kindergarten to have the eye on the child. You know, I do understand the budget constraints, and I think it should be a priority in a really line-by-line go-through, and is there any more funds we can come up with from anywhere else to make it happen? And if it doesn't happen this year, then look towards, is the, you know, maybe come up with a three-year plan, you know, let's keep our eye on the statistics of, you know, this year, let's watch what happens with the half-day versus the full day, and, you know, maybe look at this as a more long-term goal as the Common Core is fully implemented. And if we do see the children lagging behind, then this has to remain a top priority to make it for the kids moving forward.
Katie?
What do you see besides kindergarten as like the most pressing issue that is facing right now?
Somewhat of, I know people may not want to hear, but I think that Blueberry is very overcrowded, and I think that that, it's going to have to be addressed in the near future. I think when I looked at the numbers, it's about 27% more children at the schools there, which is, it's just a big number, that's a big difference. And I do feel like, although I know the parents love the school and there's such a high regard to the school, that having such higher numbers there is not really in the best interest of those children at the end of the day. And I think that that in the next couple of years is really going to come to the front of having to be addressed. And also the deterioration of the middle schools and their condition and how the school committee and the town is going to handle that, I'm sure will probably be issues that will be coming forward.
I think you've heard my question before, so I'll just ask you what your position is on the Springfield Casino.
I'm very disappointed, and it looks like it is, you know, I know there's some hope that it still might be here, both as it being so close to where I live and the negative implications from it being so close to where I live. And I work in Springfield, and I just think that is in and of itself for all of us who drive into Springfield and out of it, it already, the traffic in and out of Long Meadow, I feel, is going to be an absolute nightmare. It already somewhat is for how far you have to drive.
Thank you. Kim?
I guess, how would you handle the requests approached by individuals in your school close to you?
I would listen to what they have to say, and then, you know, depending what the problem is, if it is something that is under the school committee's purview, I would suggest they send a formal letter or perhaps come to a meeting, and that that would be the better forum. Or if it, you know, maybe is a problem with a teacher or something that is a very early problem, maybe just give them some practical advice, you know, maybe you should go have a meeting with the teacher or just, maybe I could offer them some practical advice. Or if it's something bigger than that, I would suggest, you know, writing a letter to the school committee or coming and expressing at the meeting, but that, you know, it's a seven-person committee, I can't go in with an agenda and advocate for you. That's not my role.
Speaking just averages, with you being a lawyer and your husband being a doctor and you have the three children, I can't imagine that your household's going to be challenged with the core issues on your children. I would anticipate that your children may be challenged to have curriculum that will challenge them in the later years of their development. We currently don't have gifted programs. And what are your thoughts about those operations?
I would like to see what, first have a study done to see what the cost of implementing that would be and how many students it would be. Because I also, I mean, I think that we are charged with providing kids their education. I think if you are, I haven't kind of heard the term "gifted" thrown, I know it's somewhat trying to make a comeback, but if it did take away from the rest of the education to fund an advanced education in the high school or gifted programs, I would really have to weigh the cost-benefit and have some more information. I feel like I couldn't make a firm decision on that.
Okay. Great. Janet?
So with the ability of working as a team toward the common goals, can you or do you feel you should support a board decision that you personally are not in favor of, and why or why not?
I would support a decision even if I wasn't in favor of it. I think the time, when there is debate going on, I think that's the time to voice your opinion and make sure you're, you know, that you're speaking with respect and that your opinion is getting across, but if it becomes a six-to-one vote and you're the one that voted against it and it becomes an initiative, then now you speak for the school committee and that's your initiative, and it should be presented in a positive light.
Can I do my follow-up now? So you had said earlier in your personal statement that, you know, your job entails analyzing facts and circumstances and coming up with the best decision. And I know, you know, with the questions you've been asked about full-day kindergarten, we did have three parent forums and there was much, we were quite transparent with information that we were putting out there. So I'm curious as to how you can come up with and the statements that you have, knowing that that information was all put out there ahead of time? And in terms of supporting a goal, you know, you said, "Well, you would support a decision if everyone was in favor of it," but you weren't. So I question that difference, because you very obviously have stated that you feel that full-day kindergarten should be provided at no cost.
Well, I've stated that as my personal, as an applicant here, and I wouldn't be speaking for the committee at this point, as I'm, you know, I'm sitting here and being asked my personal opinions. So I think that's two different situations. I think if I came on and was lucky enough to be asked to be on the school committee, then if that is, the decision is made, then that is the school committee's decision. I think I'm kind of, a little, I'm sorry, confused with the question, because I was answering before as, you know, what is my personal opinion, sitting here on the matter, and then the hypothetical, if I was on the school committee?
Right, and it is hypothetical, but, you know, you've spoken out very strongly against what the school committee has done and how they've gone about doing it, and that's where I question how, why you're wanting to be a part of that if you're so unhappy with what we've done and how the process that we've done to get there.
I guess I'm confused by that. I mean, I've made statements here in public about, you know, just being disappointed in the decision.
And you've also put some in writing. There have been, you have sent emails to the select board and to the school committee stating your disappointment.
Right, after this, I said I was disappointed.
Right.
In the decision.
Mr. Clark, I'd like to clarify, is this, is this an interrogation or is it an interview?
It's an interview.
So can we keep it to that?
Yes.
Please?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I was just asking a follow-up question to my question, so I'm sorry. My question was, if you're so opposed to what the committee is making decisions upon, which have been asked by you and were identified as key issues, then why would you apply to be on a committee that you don't agree with how they handle things or how they're doing things? That was my follow-up question for, you know, if you're personally not in favor of how something is voted on. So I'm sorry if you feel it's an interrogation, but I thought it was a valid question.
What I feel is that everybody who's answered your question the way you want it answered, you've let them slide. And somebody else gives an opinion, which I asked what they thought, and then you decide to go in and say, "Here, this has been for more than a minute."
Yeah.
Okay? And that, what I, what I don't like is that if we're going to do that, then we can hit hard on everything. This is an interview.
I agree.
You can have a follow-up question, but let's sort of keep this moving along.
Yeah, let's try to, I agree.
Janet, are you finished or did you?
I, could I, could I just speak, I feel like at the end, I understood, like, I would like to respond to the end of the question. I don't feel like, because I disagree with one, if disagreeing with one decision that the school committee ever made means that you can never, you shouldn't have any interest in the school committee, that's a disconnect to me. I don't think anyone in the community and any taxpayer would agree with 100% of the decisions that the select board makes, that the school committee makes. And it's not a personal thing, it's not, we all have our opinions, and there were even people within the committee who had different opinions on it. So I don't think of it as I, I'm coming in to take down that issue. I mean, sure, that issue sparked my interest, but it's one issue. There could be a thousand other issues I agree with, so I don't think that that would be a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Yeah. I'm going to move on from the question I thought I was going to ask, but rather go back and ask the question about, how would you propose or what are your thoughts about what some think is a higher proportionate cost of special ed education in town relative to the number of students enrolled in special education? Should it be a priority of the school committee to reduce those costs or not, and should it be a factor at all in the budgeting process?
I don't think I would say, the priority, number one, is to make sure all the kids who need services are getting the services that they do need and that they're the appropriate services. I think the school committee should always look to see if the programs are working efficiently or if they need to be modified or changed to make, you know, I know there's, there have been the Students' Brought-In District, and we've brought the resources in, which helps with the cost. I also believe that a lot of the early intervention to identify the children earlier will help in the end with the cost, and I do think we need to continue, I know it's hard, I know Long Meadow has a lot of money, to keep making sure we don't, aren't missing any grants or special education, anything out there that we may apply for from the state. anything out there that we may apply for from the state, to just keep an eye on that and make sure we're always looking for that.
Thank you.
All right, let's scroll back over. Liz.
With your position as a lawyer and we have our collective bargaining coming up within the next year, is that something that you have interest on being part of?
I would have interest in that. I don't have any specific experience, so I would be coming in fresh with specific knowledge of how that process works though, but it would be, I would be interested in that, yes.
John.
I want to go back to the discussion about science versus the humanities. As you know, STEM, you're familiar with that term, science, technology, engineering and math. This is obviously a critical area that we have to work in, but the humanities are also part of it, in my judgment. So as someone who had a undergraduate major, you were a biochemistry major?
I was.
And then you went into law. Well, you kind of answered the question, but would you like, talk to that, please?
I mean, I think especially in K through 12, we need to have the most well-rounded students that we can. Because, I mean, just moving forward, I think it helps your brain to develop, you know, a humanities class develops your brain in a different way than a chemistry class does. It's very different development and it's also social development. And then, you know, going into college, as you noticed, I was a biochemistry degree. Had I not continued to take humanity in my English classes and be strong in those, I couldn't have went to law school when I made that decision. So I think it's just so important to have that all-around background in all the subjects to just develop and grow and move into whatever your future holds that, you know, when you're five or six, you have no idea what your, your future is going to be.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Marie.
If you are appointed and then elected in June, what would your personal goal be for your time on the school committee?
My personal goal would really be to, you know, any issue that comes up in front of the committee is to just really dive in, you know, roll up my sleeves and work the issue to death to hopefully come up with the best solution possible. I know we can all predict what issues may come up, but I think a lot of times the bigger issues just jump out of nowhere and you've got to jump in and get your hands dirty and learn the background and just figure it out.
So there's no special area that you're really interested in?
Nothing, really.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we're going to go into the second round now. I don't have a follow-up. Paul? Katie? Alex?
Now, one of the things I've found on the select board, you know, I'm a lawyer by training, but, I mean, we're discussing things like paving, you know, I've never paved anything, you know. And, you know, we're dealing with budgets, you know, and I'm not an accountant. And I think the nature of being an elected official is to take on things that you don't have any particular background in. So, I mean, you're not an educator by trade, so, I mean, could you kind of speak to that? You know, obviously, you know, it's important to have a mix of backgrounds for the community as a whole to be represented, but how would you deal with taking on a subject matter that's not your specific expertise?
Right, I mean, I think the first step is, you know, for your, if you're given paving as a subject, is you've got to go find out everything you can about it. I'm a bit obsessive-compulsive, so I would probably read hours and hours and hours about paving until I was spewing paving out of my ear, but, you know, and I think, you know, you just got, you have to be willing to adapt it and learn new things. And just, if you don't know, ask someone who knows, ask a senior person on the committee or ask an expert in the area and just be willing to ask and listen to somebody who can teach it to you. And I do think I can learn and I think I pick things up quickly, so I think I can do it.
Richard. Oh, wait, Kim, sorry.
If you're talking about paving, it's got to be Richard.
I had an asphalt question already.
Any follow-up?
I really don't have any, thank you.
Janet? Okay, Mark?
I have part A and B. And part A is, did you in fact take out papers to run in the June election?
I did and I submitted them today, actually.
Okay, and so part B is, if you're not appointed through this process, are you committed to still run?
I am, I submitted my papers today.
Thank you.
That was a short AP. Liz?
Nothing.
John?
I'm all set, thank you.
And Marie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
All right, last but certainly not least, Georgia. So like everybody else, first of all, thank you for your interest in this seat. You can begin with your name, address and a personal statement. And then I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Santinella for the last question.
Well, thank you for having me here. I'm Georgia Robert. I live on 89 Hazardville Road. And this is my 15th year as an educator. I've been teaching English Language Arts for 15 years and I've been involved in leadership roles throughout that time, serving as a mentor to new teachers, hosting student teachers over the years from various colleges and universities. And currently I'm in a more leadership role in Simsbury Public Schools. So I think I have some interesting experiences to bring to the committee, but at the same time, a little healthy distance and not much of my experience has been spent in Connecticut. So I think that could be beneficial. And I also have some experience in interesting districts. Ellington, for example, having the lowest per pupil expenditure in the state and having some interesting, you know, performance levels that are always improving, but, you know, high-performing district. So I'm excited about the opportunity. I've also recently been part of the Leadership Institute for Political and Public Interest, which is organized through the Women's Fund of Western Massachusetts. So just this past Saturday, I was at a class which was about understanding municipal budgets, which was fabulous. A little overwhelming, but fabulous.
No one's ever said fabulous, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think I have some interesting experiences in terms of, you know, being on the other side, you know, presenting to school committees for different initiatives. And I think it would be a great opportunity for me. And we moved here for the Long Meadow Public Schools, there's no question about that. If I could put in a little plug for the Park and Rec Department too, I would say that we also considered that when we moved. So all my research was who offered full day, who offered half day kindergarten, you know, looking at wonderful school districts in this part of Massachusetts as well as northern Connecticut. But then also I looked at the Park and Rec offerings. Just says affordable ways to be able to get my kids involved with numerous things, so thrilled to be here.
Thank you very much. Paul?
You mentioned Kim there, I have the same question, your thoughts about the full day?
Well, I'd like to begin by saying I attended all the forums and I did speak out, probably the earlier ones, I didn't want to repeat myself. I spoke out in favor of the full-day kindergarten. My son had an amazing experience. I think that ultimately, as many others have said, I would want to move towards a free full-day kindergarten. When you look at the per pupil, student to teacher ratio, you know, as retiring teachers retire at the top of the pay scale, you know, and we look at that maybe over three years, you know, are there opportunities where certain grade levels could absorb slightly? You know, are there ways where we can make difficult decisions but offer the full day? I will say as someone who was moving, a lot of people do move here for the schools and that would be a big draw, you know, had that been free full day, that would have probably stopped some of my searching in other areas. And, but I also, you know, I'm understanding of the decision that was made. You know, I elected to pay for it with my older son and I think that it's a reasonable solution, given everything, but I would want to see a way to prioritize that in the budget.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Katie?
What do you see as specific to Long Meadow, our biggest challenge for the schools?
Well, one of the biggest challenges is definitely the overcrowding issue at Blueberry. But I think from my perspective, of course, I'm over in the Wolf Swamp area, I think we could do a better job of highlighting the amazing things going on at all three elementary schools. I think we could perhaps make the R-word redistricting less of such a situation that feels like turmoil to some people. And I wonder if that would be something that could be improved upon. The other thing I would add is I'm really for technology integration. I think hopefully that comes through in my resume and whatnot. But at the same time, I think we need time to develop our students into innovators and problem solvers. And when I look at a great school system like Long Meadow and how to make it better, to me, that's something that sticks out, is there a way to really have a comprehensive plan so that our kids are exposed to some really interesting and creative ways to solve problems or, you know, robotics, engineering, you know, some of that kind of work. I feel my son, you know, he gets six weeks of social studies and then six weeks of science and he comes home really excited to talk about the science, you know, but it feels a little like a change in the day, you know, as opposed to something that feels like a regular part of his routine.
Thank you.
So I asked the same question, your position on the Springfield Casino?
Well, I'm a positive person, so if it comes in, I hope that it solves the dilemmas of some of the businesses in the South End. You know, I, there are some business people who are hoping it comes in and I look at it from that perspective to say, for their sake, you know, if it happens, I hope they're right. But in the end, I'm, you know, not in favor of it. I give the people involved who, you know, asked for what they asked for in the mitigation, I give them a lot of credit. I think that that was wise to go after that funding and I prefer it would not come in, but if it's going to, I think Long Meadow was wise to try to seek the compensation that it did.
How would you handle the requests approached by individuals in your school district or just within the school system itself that you are a little closer to?
In my own profession, you know, definitely being a supervisor and dealing, you know, sort of in that chain of command when there are issues that parents may have or students, I would definitely direct people back to the teacher, you know. You know, my first question would be, have you spoken with the teacher? You know, and depending on what the answer was there, you know, I think I would just handle it the way I do in my own career, which is, you know, getting those lines of communication back on track, whether it be speaking with a teacher, speaking with the principal. But I would have no problem, you know, sort of communicating what the function of this committee is and that, you know, individual complaints wouldn't, you know, that there's really no forum for that there unless they want to come and be heard.
Richard.
Thank you. Running for this position, usually people are motivated to do it. I mean, they certainly don't run for a public office to be beat me out and all that and just sit back. So what is your main thrust? What, what do you want to do if you put on school board or school committee?
Really, just have a hand in making a great school system even better. I think I just have that kind of growth mindset that, yes, we came here for the amazing public schools, but there's always a way that we can improve that. And, you know, I'm just really interested in education. I mean, some people have their hobbies in sports and all that, you know. But really, at the end of the day, I find myself in conversations with people around town, you know, about the school system. I think they know what I do and we get into those conversations and just have been and always will be very passionate about education. So if I look for an opportunity to give back to the community, it would be somehow connected to education.
Is there anything specific, though? Your answer was very general, is education. Is there something specific that you'd like to work on that you're going to bring to the board as a point of interest?
Yeah, I would say a really comprehensive plan for that. I mean, we can call it STEM or STEAM, but that idea of, you know, the common core is also about creating problem solvers and innovators. And I think that there are ways that we could bring more of that into the elementary school. What they're doing at the elementary school is amazing, the readers and writers workshop programs, fabulous. You know, I have a first grader talking about fractions and that's wonderful. I just don't want to see other components put to the side. So that would be something I would want to bring forward. And then another thing I could add to that is a strong relationship with the Park and Rec Department. I mean, as, we're two working parents and, you know, I do hear a lot from people in the community about options for after-school programming and I know that there's a coordinator of that now, which is a relatively new position here in Long Meadow. And I think, you know, continuing to support that work and anything we could do to make those options available. You know, there are a lot of working parents in town and bringing, you know, choosing programs that would really help support, you know, and enhance enrichment programs, enrichment classes after school, I'd like to see that.
Okay, thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. Janet?
Okay, so can you or do you feel you should support a decision that the board makes as a whole, even if you personally were not in favor of it? And why or why not? And could you give a personal example?
I think there's a time and a place for going on the record in disagreement. An example where I might disagree is if I were on a subcommittee having to do with the buildings, for example. And we were told that Williams needs a new roof, you know, that there's evidence of deterioration of the roof. But people said, you know, we cannot fund it at this time. I think that's a time when I would go ahead and go on the record as disagreeing with that decision. Because of, obviously, down the road, you know, things could result and, you know, that would be an example of taking a stand and disagreeing. On the other hand, something like a social media policy, you know, if I disagreed with a couple, you know, word choice, you know, semantics or something. But in general, was really excited about the concept as a whole, then I would go along and agree, you know, and not get hung up on a couple of words.
Thank you. Mark?
As an educator yourself, how would you look at the relative roles and responsibilities of the school committee relative to the administration in terms of policy implementation, policy setting, policy proposals, program proposals? What role does the school committee have in each one of those? And, you know, obviously, it'll take 45 minutes, but versus the, you know, the administration's role? And how would you look at that?
I would look at it definitely as a partnership, as a collaboration. I think, you know, the school committee always has to be listening to what the administration is bringing forward. In the end, I think that there can be drafting of policy back and forth, but in the end, the school committee is going to, you know, vote on and set, approve the policies itself. But I think communication along the way is vital and I think like a social media policy would be a great example of that, you know, looking at a draft and then sending it down to high school teachers and having them give feedback on it and then having it come back up and work on revising it would make sense. But, I mean, I think you always want as positive a relationship between the administration and the school committee as possible and working together and listening, compromising.
Thank you.
Liz?
Thank you for coming. Since you work in the Simsbury District and I'm just looking at their district, it's sort of similar to Long Meadow. Do you, the problems that you see or that they face, do you see that we also face them? And do you see any things that? And do you, do you see any things that you do in your job that we could use here?
I think I, I do naturally think that way, you know, and I think that the years I spent in Ellington, too, I am automatically thinking, you know, different positions that Long Meadow has that these other school districts don't and vice versa. One issue that's always, an example of a time when I sort of went against the majority opinion had to do with de-leveling or reducing the number of levels offered. And I think that I'm probably always going to be in favor of reducing the number of levels and that's an important thing. But I'm sure that Long Meadow High School experiences some of the same issues that I see in Simsbury or that I saw in Ellington in terms of meeting the needs of all of your students, keeping students who are above grade level challenged, and with the Common Core state standards and text complexity, having students who may be behind grade level in reading and keeping them challenged but not overwhelmed and sort of making those decisions. I'm sure that that's similar. And then I think, I think the budget dilemmas can be similar. You know, I just, I feel very strongly that in town, people get very, you know, they have strong opinions about the budget and it's never easy. And I think that if there's any way over the next five years, you know, budgets can be built that are going to bring in some of those people who have kids who have, you know, gone out of the school system and try to really care the whole community and make progress in pleasing more of the community, that, that would be great. And I think that that's also a, an issue in every town that I've been in.
Thank you. John.
Given your background in English and literature, and I think, you know how I feel about humanities, the arts, et cetera, so I'm going to give you a slightly different question. Do you think we test too much? Or, and have you had any experience with alternative assessments? Like, for example, portfolios or whatever other thought you have.
Yeah, I mean, I'm very concerned, I mean, as an American, I'm concerned that we test too much. Massachusetts has gone with Park, Connecticut went with Smarter Balance. I'm very concerned about the number of hours and how that's going to impact, you know, the elementary school situation. You know, I get my hands on the schedule and see what's happening and I do think it's too much. I'm a big proponent of portfolios in the classroom, writing portfolios, you know, that makes sense to me, individualizing goals, you know, having students set goals and we talk about those goals. And I think that's an obvious way to differentiate instruction. I taught the UConn Writing Through Literature Early College Experience course, you know, that was all portfolio-based. So I am a big fan of that. I mean, unfortunately, those testing realities are bigger than, than any one school system. But at any opportunity to make more sense out of it, I would be a big fan because I think with the PSAT and the SAT and down in Connecticut, Smarter Balance is the end of eleventh grade on, it's becoming outrageous, the, the number of hours that kids are going to spend on these tests. The annual changes to the SAT, too, so it's constantly changing.
Marie.
Have you taken out papers?
Yes.
You have, so you will be running even, what if you are not appointed, will you still be running?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
What subcommittees are you interested in?
Um, I would, well, I would say two for different reasons. Finance, because I think for me personally, that's an area I could grow the most. And a wise superintendent once told me that that's really where you create change in the school system, is through what gets funded. If you think about that, that's pretty logical. The other one would be curriculum or some version of that, you know, in the sense of just being able to ask good questions or, I don't know, not necessarily give feedback, but being able to ask good questions when people were coming in to talk about curricular initiatives or textbooks, that kind of thing.
Thank you. All right, follow-up. Paul? Julie? Alex?
No.
Kim? Richard?
Nope.
Janet?
I do have one. I know, I, too, work in Connecticut and live in Massachusetts and, and laws and initiatives are very different between the two. Do you think that would be difficult for you to have to be switching back and forth from perhaps what you know and are familiar with and how it's done in your district or in your state versus, versus following a different state's regulations and guidances? I know we're both doing Common Core.
Um, no, I mean, I don't, I don't think it would be difficult. I, I mean, I taught out in Braintree, I taught in West Springfield, you know, I do have plenty of experience in mass. I worked on the MCAS assessment development for the sixth grade reading test back in the day. I have those experiences. I think all along the way, I never moved to Connecticut in all these years, not even for, you know, a month. So I think I'm, I've just always naturally, and I'm a news watcher and a paper reader, so I've always been automatically comparing things, you know, in my own mind, just for my own interest, I guess. So I don't think that would be too much of a problem. I think there might be times when I, I'd be, you know, more likely maybe to just, I don't know, provide an example or a program suggestion or something like that. But the actual law, I don't think that would be a problem. I feel even, I loved my law class in Connecticut, but I, I'm the type that would need to sort of have it in front of me and read it sort of each time we looked at something.
Okay, thank you.
Good news is we have lawyers. Mark.
Can you just speak a little bit to the, your perception of the time commitment, your ability to, I assume you believe you have the ability to meet that time commitment and just talk to that for a minute?
I, I mean, I know the regular meeting schedule and I, I understand how special meetings can get called. I mean, I think things that were happening in the early afternoon obviously would be a struggle for me, but in the evening, this is something, you know, I'm committed to making time for. And, yeah, I mean, I think there are a few things I might cut back in my personal life to just keep things a little more simple at home, but, yeah, I definitely feel that I have the time or I wouldn't, I wouldn't be here.
Great. Liz.
No, nothing else.
John?
I'm outside, thank you.
Marie?
Thank you.
I'm outside as well. Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming out. I appreciate all of you applying and best of luck. So we will follow up with you on what date we decide to actually vote. The idea is to have the clerk present at that meeting where we do vote so that you can be sworn in right away and actually join us at our meeting. If we should decide to do it during a school committee meeting, if not, you know, then you got a little while.
I'm swearing in on a Tuesday evening.
Yes, Tuesday evening. So ideally, I think it'll be the twenty-fourth, but we have, we'll have to work that out.
I'll talk to you.
Paul said no.
I'm not, I'm just, I know where you are.
So, anyway, thank you very much. And at this time, we will conclude the joint meeting and you guys will go your separate way into that back room over there.
Do you have a meeting?
We're in here.
Oh, you do?
Yeah. We'll begin tonight, I guess, we'll pledge our allegiance, which we did not do at the beginning of our joint meetings, but let's do it now.
We did it.
We did it at the beginning of the first joint meeting.
Oh, I wasn't, I didn't see it.
Oh, I must have been a bummer.
Let us pledge again.
Let's do it anyway.
We'll pledge.
Okay, someone deviated in the last couple of minutes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, merciful,正义, and justice.
Amen. Tom?
The Long Meadow School Committee maintains educational policies that foster continuous improvement by challenging and supporting all children in a safe and caring learning environment, enabling them to reach their highest potential and become productive citizens. Through effective communication and positive relationships, the Long Meadow School Committee will make informed decisions in the best interest of the students, the schools, and the Long Meadow community. For correspondence.
Yes, I got, I got the email.
Okay.
I got an emailed letter from Mr. Fred Friedman, received February twenty-fourth regarding the school committee meeting, uh, February twenty-fourth, and a memo from Mr. Donald Jarvis, Director of Occupational Education at the Lower Pioneer Valley Career and Technical Education Center dated March fourth, two thousand fourteen, regarding the Student of the Month for February two thousand fourteen. Long Meadow students honored this month are Ashley Matthews in Graphic Communications One and Benjamin Wiseman in Graphic Communications One and Integrated Occupational Prep.
Congratulations to them.
Congratulations.
Seeing no visitors, we'll move right on to school committee comments. Any school committee comments?
Yes.
Okay, John and then Liz.
And, yes, I, I just want the committee to know that I responded to Mr. Fred Friedman. I was struck by the tone of his message and we had a very cordial, friendly talk. And I pointed out to him that the committee that evening was a very brief one. Our meeting was very brief, but we, we covered a large number of topics very rapidly. So I did, I disagreed with his assessment that it was disjointed. And I also gave him some background on how our full committee meetings, where we present the results of subcommittee meetings and deliberations. So we don't do a lot of that on camera, but it is being done. And frankly, I, I wanted to commend the, the vice chair for the way the meeting actually went and I let him know that. And so we paused and signed off on a very friendly basis. He thanked me for the call.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
And thank you, Liz, for covering while I was away.
You're welcome.
And you had other, you had comments, well?
I did. Let's see. I wanted to congratulate a center school student, Sydney Lehman, for winning an essay contest through the MAAC. And she was awarded on Friday night.
Yes.
And, let me see, I think that, too. And also, there is a center school concert this Wednesday night at the high school.
I would also like, any other comments? I would also like to echo Liz's comments about Sydney. I was actually lucky enough to attend. Her teacher, Mrs. Quinn invited me down, so Mrs. Hutton and I sat in the back and she did a fantastic job. It was a really well-written essay. And so congratulations to her. I also just have two quick announcements. On the nineteenth, at seven o'clock at Symphony Hall, it's the Imagine Concert with all of the choral groups throughout the entire school system. And on the twenty-second is the Wolf Swamp Dinner with the Stars. And I believe that everybody appears going. Maybe not Tom, but everybody else is going. So I would encourage anybody who has not yet bought a ticket or a table, I think they prefer tables, to, to get out there and support Wolf Swamp and their PTA. Liz?
Just one more thing. And I wanted to congratulate Mrs. Quinn for her third year.
Yes.
The contest.
Third year.
The student year class winning that contest.
That's great. Excellent.
Very cool. So, all right, let's move right along to superintendent's report.
I apologize for the pulling up the wrong budget report. It's been a busy day, so there are no three minutes in it. Just one more, that's it. The building, the building continues to need our attention in terms of addressing last-minute things that have to be fixed, to make sure that we're getting our warranties covered and getting everything done before the contractors move off-site. So we have another meeting on Wednesday to meet with all the key players. We asked them all to come in again. We did find out last week when we were talking, Tom, Kevin and I, about what needed to be done, and we recognized that on the punch list they had given us, there's nothing on there that was electrical. Kevin picked that up. And so when we called the OPM and said, what's with all the electrical work? He said, well, there were a couple of punch lists out there. So at that point, I asked the OPM to get all the punch lists and put it onto one, which is very disconcerting that we've been having all these meetings and it's never come up before that there were other punch lists out there. So, you know, thanks to Tom and Kevin, we continue to pick up things that, that hopefully will get done. Our job is to make sure that everything is done on the punch list before we close up with Gilbane. The high school basketball teams are unbelievable. The boys and girls teams have both won. They played last Wednesday at UMass and they won at that point. And then Saturday, they took the Western Massachusetts championship title, both boys and girls. Tomorrow night, they'll play against the Central Mass winners at Central High School. Should they win these games, then they go on to the state. So let's root on our basketball teams. Way to go.
Really exciting.
We continue to meet on Lifelong Learning, our new adult education program. We are going to be running it with approximately ten courses. The final details will be put together this week and we hope to get programs out by the end of the week. The courses will start on April first. They're going to be very cost-effective and we have some great first-time courses, financial planning, quilting, a variety of courses, and language.
Marie, if I can just interrupt you for one second, I just want to extend a huge thank you to you and Jim Moran and Stacy Smith, as well as Emily Perkins for, and Barry Jarvis, of course, for all of the work that you guys have put into, you know, making this a reality. I heard so often from people when they were touring the high school during that opening weekend, how much they would love to use this facility. And I think we're getting to a point right now where we're, we're really opening it up and it's a great use of this building.
I'm delighted. I think, you know, it's been a priority to give back to the community. We've asked so much and we really are hoping that we can expand this program so that people are in to use all of the facilities. So, thank you. The middle school working group has met again and we're discussing a timeline for the completion of the new school. I think that Katie's going to go into the details of that a little bit later. Helping Hands Center Elementary School has been working with students, staff, and parents. They've made almost three thousand sandwiches to send off to the local shelter. The students come in at seven thirty a.m., they bring all the ingredients they need. Some of the parents join them, the staff, and they make the sandwiches to send over. They've done it six times, I think, was this morning one of them or tomorrow morning's one of them? Wednesday morning? So that will be the sixth time they've gathered to do this. That's quite a feat. And I am especially thankful to Donna Hutton, who's in, you know, who's really instilling a sense of community service and giving back and taking care of others. So that, that's great to see. I did not put her on the report, but Wolf Swamp had literacy night extremely well-attended. They had teachers showing different things that are being done. They introduced the Reader's Workshop to parents. Neil was saying that it was a huge success, but next year he'd like to form, to make a plan that includes students so that the students come to give literacy evening as well. So congrats to Wolf Swamp for a great night. Kelly and her team have been working on the scope and sequence for Reader and Writer Workshop, and they have finished them and they are going to be going out to the teachers later this week. That's a huge accomplishment because people are saying, what is it that we're supposed to do? How much time do we spend on this? And now teachers know exactly how much time and what it looks like. So thanks to Kelly and her group. In addition, the committee's looking at phonics programs and there are primary grade teachers that are actually going to pilot phonics programs. We have kits that make it easy so the teachers can just reach into the kit. They don't have to do a lot of planning around it because you keep in mind they're doing reading and writing, phonics, vocabulary, grammar. There's a lot to teaching literacy. So this is a perfect way to do it. So there'll be a decision made by the end of the year so we can ask for end-of-year funds to get those into classrooms. The Final Professional Pathway, our staff development program, occurred on March third. What Kelly had done is organized staff development, so there was teacher choice, and the choices included Writers Workshop, Reader's Workshop, small group instruction, and kindergarten instruction. So teachers signed up for one of those avenues and studied it throughout the year. It was very popular with the teachers. We see the results in classes. When we go to visit, you can actually identify who took Reader's Workshop because of what's happening in their classes, as well as many that took Reader's Workshop. So it was a great, great program. In addition, special education teachers were instructed on AIMS Web, which is a way to monitor student growth and achievement. So that's great. So again, special thanks to Kelly for organizing some great opportunities for our teachers. Middle School RTI, we've been working with elementary RTI. The middle school is now ready to move ahead with that as well. Response to Intervention. With Response to Intervention, we're looking to put in Tier Two, thanks to school committee, with that new Literacy Intervention Specialist that we're going to add at both of the middle schools. So with that, we're going to be able to provide that support. The Chris Collins is chairing the Middle School Schedule Committee, which is working with Glenn Brooke. They have teachers, staff, administrators on the committee to see how they can best set up a schedule that allows for time to actually service kids that need second-tier intervention. And that will be rolled out to the staff soon. Marissa?
Any other questions for Marie? Great. I have a very short report because I was away for a week, but... I have a very short report, because I was away for a week, but tomorrow night I will be, and I believe some other people here, hopefully Finance Subcommittee, will be attending the Select Board Budget Hearing. They'll be presenting their budget, and hopefully, we don't get too many questions, but we'll see. And then Wednesday night, we are presenting our budget to the Finance Committee. So that should be good. The other thing that I wanted to keep the committee aware of is I did speak with Jan Gould, one of our attorneys today, and she should have some information for us in the next couple of days about how, about what our options are with the Federal Communications Commission, about the network issues we ran into with Verizon. So she's been going back and forth with them, playing phone tag, but she let me know that she would have some information on that.
Yeah, for the sake of the audience, where are those two hearings on the budget going to be?
That's a great question. I have my calendar up right now.
I believe one's Greenwood and the other one's here.
Yep, the Select Board.
Go ahead.
Thank you. The Select Board hearing tomorrow night is at the Greenwood Over Sixty Room, which is the newly renovated room closest to the Green Honning and the parking lot.
Maple Road.
Maple Road, and I just closed my calendar. And the Finance Committee meeting is at the fire station.
Fire station, okay, thank you.
And is it seven o'clock?
And it's at seven o'clock. Both of these meetings are at seven o'clock. So, that's all I got. Joseph? And I just want to begin by apologizing to Joseph, because we canceled on him twice in a row for his two advisory council meeting.
It's quite all right.
So, we'll get you next time.
Just a quick video show you, show the committee. So I'm sure you all remember the parking report that I presented to you some time ago.
It's covered with snow.
Like everything else.
That's Thursday.
Kind of improviser.
I'm optimistic.
I just got that on DVD.
Did you watch it?
Not yet. I'm going to watch it.
We started watching it.
I just got it today.
Okay. So, I'm sure you all remember the report that I presented to you some time ago, and I just wanted to, so we did actually get that out to the students and the parents. This is the high school's website, and right here on the main announcements page, we were able to get that up for everyone to view. Got a lot of responses from that, and I sent it out to, an email to all the students, and a lot of people said they read it, so I was very happy with that. The next thing I'd like to talk about is, I'd like to commend Ms. Godin, who is our teacher here at LHS. She took our Educational Opportunities Book, which is essentially our course offerings, and she brought it into the twenty-first century. She created basically a sub-website. So now, as opposed to a PDF document that you couldn't even search, you have every, every department has a web, a little part of the website, and every single class has its own little description. It's very in-depth. You can search for anything you need. It comes right up. And she actually is going to start working on doing both handbook for the students and the teachers in the same format. So she did a great job on that. I'd like to congratulate the basketball teams, and I want to wish them the best of luck this Tuesday.
Both games.
Both games. Okay. And that's it for the computer. Other than that, so I was approached by some students recently, and they asked me to look into open campus for seniors. Now, so I went on the Massachusetts General Law's website to look as to why we can't do this, and I was unable to find something. I wasn't able to find guidelines specifically as to how many hours students have to be in school, and basically what I've understood is that the way we classify ice blocks allows us to have them, and that allowing students to leave would violate the number of hours they have to be in school. So I was just unable to find anything on that, so does anyone know where I might look to get some guidance?
The law is students at the high school level have to be in school for nine hundred and ninety hours.
Okay.
And they're not allowed, high school students are not allowed study halls.
Okay.
Ice blocks are deemed to be independent study where students are working, so they're allowed. But should you leave campus during an ice block, you would not meet the nine hundred and ninety-hour requirement.
Okay, and that's what I've been told. While looking through this, I stumbled upon something that I thought was interesting. According to Title XI, Chapter Seventy-One, Section 1A of the Massachusetts General Law, we are... Wait, what word?
I'm sorry. I'm not laughing at you, Joe. I love how thorough you are.
Thank you. We're supposed to have a moment of silence at the beginning of every day, and we don't actually do that at the high school. I know we do at the middle school and the elementary school. I'm just wondering.
Do you salute the flag?
Yes, we do. I just want to make sure we weren't breaking any laws.
Sounds like you are.
It does sound like we are.
I think you should meet with Mr. Birdie on that.
Sounds very pressing. So, just want to bring that to the committee.
Thank you, thank you. I will talk to Mr. Birdie.
Could, can I ask a question?
Yes.
What is the setup for homeroom now? Is there homeroom at the high school?
The way it works is...
If you could, just how did your day begin?
Yeah, we do have a homeroom. We meet about twelve times a year. The only, the only reason we have homeroom is to distribute report cards, which I'm working on removing, and to distribute scheduling information, and at the beginning of the year, basically get a mini freshman orientation review from the day before. So we don't really, if you don't have your homeroom teacher, you don't, they don't know your names. We, the way, the way it works is, you, school starts at seven forty-four, and you just go to your first block class. And usually, if there's something that needs to be given to all the students, they're doing, they usually do their, through English class, because all students take English. So, there is actually not a homeroom that happens every day.
Well, when do they take attendance?
Basically, the, each class takes its own attendance, so if you miss a day on Power School, it shows that you actually get six absences, one for each class. And the student office, so Mr. Dunkley and Ms. O'Martin, they then go through that, and with the class advisors, they can figure out who was called in sick by their parents, who was unaccounted for, and then they figure out why. So it's an electronic system. It starts with the first block class, figuring out if you're there or not.
So to follow up, the first block, whether it's an ice or a classroom, is where attendance effectively takes place?
Yes. Attendance is taken in each of the six blocks every, of each day.
And then, yeah, and then follow-up for each of the other. All teachers are required to take attendance.
Correct.
I know that hasn't changed.
Mm-hmm.
But there's no more homeroom as such?
No.
Okay.
That's been like that since I've been there.
They did that because the nine hundred and ninety hours, if you put in homeroom, that does not count as learning time, and you lose that ten minutes, and school would have to be extended longer.
Don't want that.
They did a lot of experimenting, and I was in high school with homeroom. Like, one year we had it, one year we didn't, one year we, then we started doing what you guys are doing now, so.
Okay.
Weird.
As you mentioned before, SCAC will be meeting with School Committee pretty soon. We have many exciting things that we, we're going to talk about, what we want to do. So, whenever that happens.
We're shooting for the twenty-fourth.
Nothing is time-sensitive, so I think we'll be all right.
Even with voting? Michael?
What, what?
Even with voting?
Voting what?
On the appointments.
Oh, well, maybe it's six, we need it seven.
Okay.
So if there's no other questions? Actually, I forgot something. So with the Educational Opportunity Book, if there's any eighth graders or eighth-grade parents, that is definitely what you want to check out for your, what you're going to take next year, because I know where, we, we actually returned, at the high school, returned to an old system that we hadn't used for many years, where last Wednesday, we had a special schedule where every block met, and teachers sat down with us and gave their recommendations. Where, I don't know if you had that when you were there, but basically the system we used last year was, it was just an informal, over the course of one week, you were supposed to have it mentioned to. So we went back to a system that we used many years ago, where every block met on one day, and teachers formally gave you their recommendations. So, it's new schedule, scheduling for next year, season is starting, so if you're an eighth grader, check out that. It's on our high school website.
Thank you, Joseph.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving right on to the financial report. John?
Finance Subcommittee met on March fifth, two thousand and fourteen, and school choice seats for two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen were discussed. Finance Subcommittee is recommending a revenue-neutral addition of school choice students in the fall of two thousand and fourteen. The Finance Subcommittee is recommending only adding the seats into the full-day kindergarten program, with parents expected to pay the full-day fee.
Okay. What is, what is that number?
Excuse me, what number are you referring to?
The school choice number, the number of seats that we're adding.
We are, the Finance Subcommittee recommended four slots.
Oh, yeah. It looks like, sorry. It looks funny. Sorry, it's okay.
So, shall I read the motion? Okay. I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the School Committee accept students in the school choice program for the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen school year as follows. Grade-level kindergarten, number of seats, four. That's full-day kindergarten. Acceptance into the school choice program will entail parents of those students to pay the three thousand dollar fee associated with the program.
Second. The motion and the second, all those in, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
And the vote passes six-zero.
Okay, on Metco seats for two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen. The lottery for Metco seats will be done in April, two thousand and fourteen. Available seats will be filled at random by grade level. Currently, there are thirty-eight Metco students in the Long Meadow school system. Four of the Metco students are seniors. It is recommended that the students be accepted and distributed to the school locations in such a way as to have at least two students in one location. The school location would be determined once the kindergarten enrollment numbers are more exact.
Have a motion?
The motion is, I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the School Committee accept students in the Metco program for the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen school year as follows. Grade-level kindergarten, full-day, four seats.
Second. Any discussion on this? Katie?
Do Metco students pay the same tuition that school choice students do?
I don't think so.
I didn't hear that. Say that again.
Katie inquired if the Metco students pay the same tuition as the choice students would, and no, they do not. The Metco program does not allow us to charge a tuition. Instead, we receive a grant from the state, which provides money for students attending based on the slots that are approved.
And the Metco is looking for the students who have tested at higher levels, is that right?
Nope, it's a lottery system.
Oh, it's this?
People apply, and it's a random selection through a lottery.
So they're both lotteries, they just have different titles associated?
Correct. Different programs.
Any other discussion on this? Seeing none, we will call for a vote, all those in favor. The motion carries.
Okay, full-day kindergarten and preschool fee discount. The Finance Subcommittee considered offering a discount to parents who enroll multiples, that is, twins, triplets, et cetera, into the full-day kindergarten, or who enroll multiples into the preschool program. This is the, these are the recommended motions. I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the School Committee offer a discount of ten percent off the full-day kindergarten fee for the second, third, et cetera, enrollee of families enrolling multiples, that is, twins, triplets, into the full-day two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen kindergarten program.
Second. Any discussion on this? Katie?
So I just want to make sure that I understand the motion. It's ten percent off per multiple, right? It would be ten percent off of the twin, and then ten, if it's a triplet, ten percent off of that as well. So it's for each child, each additional child?
Is that what we decided?
It would be ten percent off of the first multiple of the three thousand, and then ten percent off of the three thousand again for the second multiple, the triplet.
Yeah, to be clear, the first child pays the full amount.
Yeah.
The second child and third and fourth would each receive ten percent discount, but only for the kindergarten program. They have to be enrolled into the kindergarten program.
So these are multiple children of the same age, all centers, twins or triplets?
Correct.
Right, so having multiple kids in school does not?
Yes, or one in kindergarten and one in preschool will not qualify for this discount.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Everybody else, any other questions? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor, and the motion carries.
Okay.
Fantastic.
And here's our second motion. I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the School Committee offer a discount of ten percent off the preschool fee for the second, third, et cetera, enrollee of families enrolling multiples, that is, twins, triplets, into the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen preschool program.
Second. Okay, any other discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor. And the motion carries. Any other financial business, John?
No, that's it. That's our report.
Thank you very much. Moving on to other reports, School Building Committee. We haven't met.
We did not meet in February.
Nope.
But what Marie is discussing is something that we're concerned about, keeping that punch list up to date and reducing it every day before we let Gil Bane off the hook.
Exactly. Legislative?
I have nothing to report on a legislative thing.
Green?
We have a, a meeting. I'm trying to schedule a meeting, and I cannot find where it is. This Wednesday at seven o'clock? So this? Sorry. Is it this Wednesday? I thought it was. The twelfth?
It's a post.
Never mind.
Okay, so you're looking to schedule a meeting.
We'll have to schedule a meeting.
Great. Operations Subcommittee? Yeah, I guess to just give the committee a little bit of update on what's happening with Ops-Sub right now. I know that the primary focus of Ops-Sub is supposed to be field maintenance, and in speaking with the town manager, I know that Jim, when he was here, was trying to really get it going. The town manager and the Select Board Chair, to a certain extent, feel that we should wait for Carl Quist, who was the grounds supervisor, he retired, for his replacement to be fully sort of, I don't know if they even hired somebody yet, but as soon as somebody gets hired and then kind of gets a little bit more comfortable, so it doesn't look like anything's going to happen with this right away. But I think there's a near-term goal of starting it up, and I think having a new perspective from a grounds perspective, from a DPW perspective, is, you know, certainly probably beneficial, you know, somebody who's coming in and evaluating it on their own. So, that's kind of where the town is with engaging us in this discussion. So.
My, my calendar isn't showing the meeting for some reason, but it's, yeah, it's coming up, and the last one was canceled because of the snowstorm. So, I had, I had it in my head that it was this Wednesday, but is it next, I think it may be the...
The twenty-sixth.
The twenty-sixth.
In this room?
Yes. So our, the next meeting is...
Twenty-sixth, yeah.
Thank you.
At seven o'clock.
Six-thirty.
Oh, six-thirty. Yep, cool. Collaborative?
Well, the principal business of the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative Uh, well, the principal business of the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative is, right now, setting up a advertising and recruitment policy for candidates for director. And I understand the closing date for that is coming up here on the 20th of March, and then we're going to begin interviews and hopefully have the process wrapped up by, well, before the end of April. And that's because the current supervisor is going to become the superintendent over in Hadley. So, we're trying to find someone of her caliber to replace her. But that's the principal thing, that there's an ongoing discussion or labor union, collective bargaining discussions, but that hasn't reached any, any...
And that's the bus drivers?
That's principally the bus drivers.
Um, great, yeah. I mean, just to kind of echo your comments, it's a, we wish Annie really well, but it's a real shame that she's not going to be at Collaborative, because she's fantastic.
Yeah, she's a very good person, yep.
Uh, Middle School Working Group, you guys have been busy.
We have been busy. So, we don't have a lot of detail yet, but we've been sort of getting our ducks in a row to be able to come back on our March 24th meeting and give you a more detailed outline of what...
Talking to the mic.
...outline of what, you know, what to expect and our plan for coming for the middle school.
Can't wait to see it.
It'd be awesome.
I've heard snippets.
All right.
Um, all right, Policy Sub, or do you want to just, do you want to just, you do the whole policy reading right now?
Sure. Uh, we met last week and talked about, uh, finalizing the student-teacher, or, sorry, reading and proving the student-teaching internship policy. Um, we also have another policy that we're working on. We're just waiting for some clarification from legal. So, let's see, I will make a motion. I move on the recommendation of the Policy Review Subcommittee that the school committee approve the policy, LDA, student teaching and internships as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And the motion carries, 6-0. Fantastic. Uh, is there any other business anybody wants to bring up tonight?
Warrants.
I know, but I'm other.
Oh.
Yeah, sorry.
Excuse me.
Before I move on to warrants, I should say. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of warrants. John, or Janet?
Janet.
I move that the school committee approve the warrant batch number 2200 of the General Operating Fund FY14 dated March 14th, 2014, in the amount of $461,167.63.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? And the motion carries, 6-0.
I move that the school committee approve the warrant batch number 2201 of the school lunch FY14 fund dated March 14th, 2014, in the amount of $81,641.54.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion on the vote? Seeing none, I'll, I'm signing. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Is that a full one, or one more?
No, that's one's end.
Great. Uh, moving on to the approval of minutes. Can I have a motion on the minutes from January 27?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to...
27?
What meeting do you want?
January 27.
January 27.
Okay. I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the January 27, 2014 school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Are there any comments or additions?
My name's spelled wrong.
My name's correct.
Thank you.
Uh, as amended, yes?
Mm-hmm.
I have a motion to amend.
Do you need a motion?
Name is spelled wrong.
Do you amend?
So moved.
So moved.
I move a second as amended.
Okay, I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion on the minutes from February 4th?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the February 4th, 2014 school committee meeting as presented.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comments, discussion? Katie?
My name's spelled wrong. It's sort of endearing at this point, but...
Maybe you should change it.
All right, a motion to amend?
Motion to amend.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
No.
And the motion carries.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the February 24th, 2014 school committee meeting as presented and amended by Katie for her name spelled incorrectly.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
How does she spell her name, Kathleen?
Catherine.
What is it?
I spelled my name the right way.
All right, so any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed, and all those abstaining. I'm abstaining. Uh, so the motion carries, 5-0.
Because you weren't there?
Because I was not there. Um, at this time, we are going to adjourn into executive session. Can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
I move that the school committee adjourn into executive session for the purpose of strategy as relates to litigation, not to reconvene into open session.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. This motion requires a roll call vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for joining us. We'll be back on March 24th to appoint a new member to the school committee and conduct some really great business. We'll see you soon. Have a good night.